Thank you so much. Thanks, Eric, for joining us today for the video. Let's call our Board of County Commissioners meeting to order October 5, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, the one I need. Citizen input. Do we have anyone in the room that's doing citizen input? I do have quite a few citizen inputs that have been sent in by email, so let me go through those. We do have an email regarding the DA. Someone was here in town taking care of her mother, and I know that has been passed on. And then we have an email regarding the maintenance of the potholes on Old Ben Redmond Highway. Thank you for that email. We have five emails in support of Worrel Wayside Park this week. And we have an email against the Eden Properties zone change that Haley King presented as of 9/28. That will go into the record. And then we have another email, and it's also on Eden Park. So those are emails. Do we have any hands raised on Zoom, Eric? No hands raised. Okay, all right. So now we have our consent agenda.
We have approval of consent agenda.
And I'll second it.
And I actually want to pull item number two, please. Any further discussion?
So I support pulling that item for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and approve items one through four with the exclusion of item two. Commissioner DeBon.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Chang, sorry, reverse order. And the Chair votes yes. Okay, so the first item then on our action would be item number two, and it's for funding of...
Yes, why did you want to pull it?
Yes, because it is granting $3 million of grant funding to Best Care for a 16-bed facility in Redmond on property that is or has been owned by a former Commissioner Outlinger. And the price per bed is almost... The 16-bed facility, which I have been begging for for years, in fact, I wanted to get, at least as a temporary basis, Deer Ridge, the half-empty facility opened up for... to serve people that are mentally ill, that are in our community and not served. So I am definitely someone who has wanted this for a long, long time. But for the cost involved of over $14 million for this ask, with no square footage on the document that I was given by Mr. Emerson, I feel that we really should have a minimum two facilities. The Hermiston facility with 16 beds was purchased this year for $5 million. The cost of that facility that was finished in 2020 was $4.5 million. So I just feel that we definitely need two facilities. Research has been done about Medicaid funding because that's why they're limited to 16 beds. And this group following those guidelines could actually build two facilities. And honestly, that is what we need at a minimum. But one facility for $14 million is why people get so upset about government and spending money and not spending that money as carefully as possible.
I guess I'd just like to say that during our board meeting when we discussed this item last week, we tasked out staff to do some homework. And it is totally reasonable and appropriate to ask questions about why this facility or potentially facilities, because there were a number of items listed in the proposal, might cost $14 million. But the item before us right now is basically accepting funding from the state of Oregon for substance... well, for a range of behavioral health treatments in a secure residential treatment facility. We know that our state system is broken, that the state hospital is overwhelmed, that we do not have enough secure residential treatment beds in our community to support the people who are being sent home to Deschutes County and the central Oregon region who are not able to be at the state hospital. So this funding is critically necessary for addressing that. And all this does is it accepts the funding from the state for the purposes of using for a secure residential treatment facility. Facilities like this, behavioral health services in our community are our very thin buffer against overdoses, against suicide, potentially against homicidal activity. And we need to be investing in these facilities. We need to just accept this money and do our homework and keep the process moving along because stalling this agreement only delays the time when we will have secure residential treatment beds in our community.
Well, I don't... I totally agree with you.
We tasked staff to go do the homework and bring us the information back, so...
Commissioner Chang, I found out it was actually property owned by Outlinger, so that makes the story even get with more levels of why are we only getting one facility for over $14 million? We should be getting at least two facilities for that kind of money. And to quote one of the candidates for governor, speaking and referring to Measure 110, "The lack of oversight by OHA is not to be admired in this state." And I'm thinking that OHA needs to say, yes, this is fine, let's do it, but let's build two facilities. They need to know that $14 million for one facility at almost $900,000 a bed is excessive. It's three times, more than three times than what the facility in Hermiston cost. And unfortunately...
We do not know that, and we do not understand everything that is included in the proposal for secure residential treatment facilities.
That's right, because it was missing square footage on this document, the underlying document.
This is not our money. This is...
It is our money. It's the state's money.
We are a funnel. We are a pass-through for these funds. If we were putting general fund dollars into this facility, we would have the right to ask a whole lot more questions about how the tax dollars of the people of Deschutes County are being spent. This is state money that was allocated through the state legislature for these purposes that was awarded to a group of partners in this community. And you are holding up the provision of secure residential treatment beds in our community.
Commissioner Chang, I don't know about you, but I just sent a big check to the state for my quarterly tax payment. So it is our money, and it's being returned to us, and so...
But we are just a funnel for these monies.
Yeah, I know, and it's... When you tell someone that we need to build something for $14 million, that's at the cost that they're looking at doing, no wonder...
And that is why we need to do our homework.
...someone didn't like my idea about Deer Ridge.
And that is why we need to do our homework, and that is why we tasked staff with doing the homework for us. And this item was approved by a majority of the commissioners at the last meeting. And pulling it from the consent agenda now is a political stunt.
No, it's not political. It's called wasting money. It's wasting money. I want two facilities.
We are going to have the... We are going to have the answers we need before we proceed to next steps like agreements to transfer these monies to Best Care or other entities.
Go ahead and make your motion then. I think I've said my piece regarding why it should really be funding at least two facilities, and desperately do we need them. That's why I wanted to open up Deer Ridge. So make your motion, please.
I move approval of Resolution Number 2022-066, increasing appropriations within the Health Services Fund and the 2022-23 Deschutes County budget.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
So we already have a Deschutes Recovery Center, which is an example of this here in Deschutes County. It has been a resource for all of eastern Oregon, who are kind of like a funnel to Salem for other eastern Oregon counties. Having a facility, another facility like this is very important. Getting to two would be very beneficial also. This is a tri-county effort for Deschutes, Jefferson, and Crook. Best Care is the behavioral health authority for those other two smaller counties. So I do support the fact that we are going to do something. This is $3 million that's going to be in place, matching funds in support of a Oregon Health Authority residential, secure residential treatment facility, and possibly more. So I mean, there's valid arguments all over this. So I do support bringing these dollars in and, you know, setting up the pool of funds for investments in the near future.
Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes no.
And I would just like to say, we are going to get information on what we get for those $14 million, what comparable facilities that you have raised actually cost. And we will have a chance to evaluate all of that information before funds are transferred to whatever partner is receiving those funds in this community.
Wonderful. Item number five, please. Jeff, would you like to... for the fair report?
On a lighter note.
A much happier note. Yeah, this is the other side of the coin, isn't it, Jeff?
Good morning. I certainly hope so. Well, good morning to you, commissioners, guests joining us today, and all of the Deschutes County team that's here. Really excited to be... hopefully you can hear me in front of you today. And give a follow-up regarding the 2022 Deschutes County Fair and Rodeo, our 102nd annual fair and rodeo. Now that we've had a little bit of time to let the dust settle and start to unravel what the 2022 fair looked like and begin planning for our 2020... well, not begin planning, continue planning, beginning of planning started quite some time ago. Continue planning for 2023 and beyond. We'll look back at what this year gave to us. And so we're really excited about the success of the 2022 Deschutes County Fair and Rodeo and continue to invest in a strong and healthy relationship and team at Fair and Rodeo and the relationship with the Deschutes County Fair Association, which is certainly our biggest partner in the production of this annual event that's so important to the community, is integral, and we've continued to invest in that. And I think we're starting to see the dividends of that investment over the last several years and a lot of hard work by a number of people. And hard work over the last 102 years, and that has led us to where we are today. So I'll kind of start with the slides, and then I'll move through. I think one of the things that we're really excited about is some of our creation of our brand awareness. And you kind of see some of the new branding features. And if you joined us for the fair, you'll start to see some of what that looks like as we move forward with that brand in the lower right-hand corner on the screen there today. And that's a logo and a piece of the brand that you'll start to see moving forward. You'll see it throughout this presentation, but it really represents a number of things. It represents who we are, being in the center of the great state of Oregon, and a little bit about what we do. And it's something that took a lot of time and effort, but we're really proud of that graphic. And there's a lot more to go into that. But I can talk for hours about that, but I won't waste your time today doing that. I can do that at another time. I'm trying to advance, but it won't move forward. Eric, can you help me?
I don't think the Chair bond people would appreciate that.
Yeah. Before you get too far, just a few photos. Many of these taken by Eric, who just advanced. Tremendous asset to us this year. Gave us some fantastic imagery of what this fair looked like and what I consider probably some award-winning photos, especially some of the rodeo photos, that one you see up in the upper right-hand corner. But something that we haven't had in the last couple of years is the opportunity to showcase outside of fair what this activity looks like to the community. And we just kind of highlighted that with some of the things here. But things that are so important. You see the youth livestock auction. I'll comment on that here in the presentation. The rodeo. And I'll comment on some of the exciting news that we just received last week regarding the rodeo. And then some of the other pieces that are so integral to the fair. And certainly, we can't capture everything we do, but this is a quick snapshot for those who either weren't able to attend and hopefully will join us in the future, or a reminder of what we did just a few months ago at Fair and Rodeo on our 102nd year. Next slide, if you could. Moving off of that, I think more importantly, we talked about the revenue, right? A lot of what we do is fun and have the opportunity to showcase the best of Deschutes County and the best of central Oregon to our community. But it's important to be able to have revenues to do that. As you, the commissioners know, and for the community, Fair and Expo operates as an enterprise fund. We're able to invest in the annual event primarily through the revenue that's generated at that event. It's a self-funded activity, and the funds we're able to generate allow us to contribute back into that for future years and continue to grow that event and make it bigger and better and more exciting and a better representation of who we are as a community. And we're really honored to have had so many of our central Oregonians join us during this year's five-year fair. And we're also really proud and excited about the revenue that was earned. You see the purple line at the top of each of those categories is our revenue earned this year. Admissions revenue is our highest revenue ever, at a little over $740,000 in admissions fees for people coming through the gate. And you see that three-year trend report. You'll see a slightly different trend report here in a moment that shows how that stacks up against admissions revenue over the last 20 years since we've moved to our newest location. But continue to build on last year's success. And I'll pause there for a moment and talk about this year, we were not... We made some assumptions that turned out to be incorrect. We assumed that this year would be an investment year, that we'd see some step back from last year's revenues. Because you see a missing year in that trend report, there's not a fair in 2020. And we assumed that a lot of our community had pent-up demand to come to the fair in 2021 and that we may not see that same success again for this year. And so we planned for a slightly reduced fair in investment year this year. And to see that number come out ahead is a fantastic position to be in when we were not expecting that type of attendance throughout this year. Certainly, we were welcome to it, and we had hoped for it, and we had planned for it, but we were not anticipating the revenues to be up in that regard. We also had a tremendous amount of competition in the marketplace this year. There's only so much entertainment dollars in our community, and we're well aware of that. We try to position ourselves as a family budget-friendly activity. But there is a tremendous amount of activity going on in the community, and we anticipated that that could have some impacts. And while it may have, it certainly didn't impact our admissions. Food and beverage is a huge number. You see that growth there. It's almost doubled since 2019. That's a huge increase. That's a testament to our relationship with our partners. That's generated primarily by independent small businesses that are based here, either in Oregon or our local communities. And so these are local businesses that are earning a tremendous amount of money. But stepping over that million-dollar threshold for the first time in our history is a huge mark. And we continue to see that there's opportunity for growth in our food and beverage revenue through continued diversification of our food offerings and making sure that we provide a little bit of something for everyone. And I think we're doing that and investing in the relationship with our partners, bringing in some new partners and making sure that we have what best-in-class opportunities for our community, and we're seeing that represented here. But we also feel there's revenue still out there to be able to come. For those that joined the fair on Friday or Saturday nights and stood at some of the lines, it tells us there's still opportunity for additional revenue growth there as people are enjoying what we have to offer and ways to generate more. Carnival revenue is another one, just under that million-dollar mark. We asked them why they didn't break that million-dollar mark this year. And they promised us that they'll continue to do their best to do that next year. But that million-dollar threshold for a carnival, that sets us in a different class. That's... Not a lot of fairs are able to earn that kind of revenue, especially in a five-day fair. But it's just a testament to our relationship with our amusement ride provider, with Davis Shows Northwest, and what they bring to our community and that they're providing a fantastic outlet for our community to come enjoy. And then our alcohol revenue. I've broken that out from food and beverage primarily because of the change in the way we've operated this year. We had a team member who retired after this year, Butch Graham, who was a great asset. But we restructured that program, and we've talked a little bit about that, how that was going to move. And we tried something completely new with a new program. But it showed tremendous success. As you see, that huge number and that huge increase there, about a 74% increase in alcohol revenue over last year's revenue. We didn't trend that back to 2019, but you would see a similar growth pattern as you would to the other trend lines there if we had, only because we really focused on that comparison, '21 to '22, as we recognized that we were going to be forced to make a transition of some sort. So a huge growth line. And certainly, if there's any questions, feel free to stop me, or I can leave time at the end for any questions. I'm there. Yeah.
Couple thoughts. I did my part in all four areas. I was there all week. So didn't overdo it, but had a great time at the fair. Are other county fairs seeing this? Or is this kind of an outlier? Just we're on the up cycle or what?
As a whole, fairs across the state of Oregon and actually across the United States did see positive years with some anomalies in unique areas. Fairs that were earlier in the fair season did not see the success that fairs later in the year did. Those fairs actually saw some decreases. As we got into summer, across the board, the majority of fairs did see increases, although not to the degree that maybe we saw. They saw some growth over prior year, but not the huge increases. A lot of the fairs that showed increases, and we're in this weird pattern because there were still a number of fairs that did not occur in 2021. And so, you know, I think the... An apt comparison that I'll have to go back and look at is what was the success of fairs that occurred in '21 and '22 and compare, benchmark ourselves against those to make sure that we're performing. So a good question, but I'll...
Great. And then kind of a big picture about, you know, when there's revenues like this. I know there's kind of two ways we can go with this is reinvesting back in the facility. So that's the, you know, the county fair, the fair association, the activity that happened, you know, carpet, painting, facility, water infrastructure, whatever the investments are. But also reinvesting in the next fair, because I know that was a kind of a topic for discussion for the fair association. Hey, can't we have a reserve to roll in next year so we can know that there's money in the bank to get started next time? Thoughts about that?
Absolutely. And so the success of this year's fair. And these are all top-line revenues. You know, the more important number is net revenue at the end of the day because that's what we're investing, we have to invest. But that number will be very good as well. In the last two years, we've been able to repay the damage that was done through COVID-19 when we weren't able to produce a fair. The fully fund this Fund 616, which is the fair-specific fund that had some negative earnings or a negative position after going into 2020 and 2021, and been able to put those, continue to invest back in that program. For the first time in recent history, the fair itself will be able to invest not only back into creating a nest egg for itself, so there's startup dollars for future years of a measurable amount that allows us a comfortable position to be able to do so and some room for error moving forward, but also back into the capital reserve fund for the facility itself through Fund 617, which is the capital reserve that we've been really working hard to build up as the facility has now reached 22, 23 years in age. Certainly, there's a lot of maintenance and a lot of repair and replacement necessary. And the fair is now able to start to fund that program as well as we work to build up that nest egg. So the success over the last two years, where we're anticipating we'll see net revenues of close to $1 million will allow us to, one, repay the damage that was done through COVID. that was done through COVID, to create a nest egg and a starting point for future fairs for 2023 and beyond, but also contribute back into the fair or the facility investment fund as well for the first time. And we're really excited about that.
Didn't we hear about wiring at the fair association meeting that there was some rewiring of some of the barns and everything, that there were sort of issues out there? So yeah, we had a lot of extension cords and I know how extension cords work. So anyway, no, it's, it's outstanding, Jeff. I think about what you've done, how you threw together that shootout rodeo with, you know, with Crooked River, with Sisters Rodeo in the High Desert. You've really done a lot of things and these fair numbers are, they're, they're outstanding. So thank you.
Yeah, of course, absolutely. Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of needs on the facility. I mean, with one of the largest facilities in the United States, obviously 340 plus acres, there's a ton of places where we can invest funds and we have an aging facility. We have the nicest and best facility I consider in the United, in the entire country, but it doesn't mean that it's perfect and we need to continue to invest in that so that it stays that way, so that our worst day is today. And we're always improving from that point each and every day. And we do have some investments and there's things such as improved wiring and, and investments into the future that are necessary. So we'll continue to do that and we're excited to see that. So Eric, if you want to, if you can go to the next slide, sorry. I don't know why that thing's not working. This gives a quick overview of what our attendance looks like as far as numbers. It's kind of small to see on the screen, but this gives you that gross revenue, or not gross revenue, this gives you the actual realistic attendee count. And we've made some adjustments in how we're acquiring data, but this gives us real world data to give us a real measurable number of people who are on the facility at any one time. We're able to go back almost seven years in history through the acquisition of this data to see where we are. We're able to trend our, trend report ourselves. So it's not necessarily talking only revenue because this helps us provide data to our partners as to who's coming, when they're coming. But also some new interesting things is how many unique visitors are coming? 106,000 unique visitors visited the fair this year over five days and 100, almost 165,000 total visits, but also how long they're staying on property. And one of the things we see is, is a decrease in the, the visit, the time on grounds. And while we still are leading class in time on grounds, that's something we need to pay attention to is make sure that our community is spending time on grounds so that they have a good perception of the value that we're providing. But we're still seeing growth. We benchmark against 2019, which was our 100th anniversary and our best fair to date. But we continue to see growth there in 2021 and 2022. And this is important because we want to make sure that we're not just seeing revenue growth, that we're actually seeing attendee growth, because that's the more measurable number of making sure that our, our community is coming out to enjoy what it is we provide. And we see that and actually a significant growth in total number of attendees this year. And that's partly because of the relief in the capacity we were allowed to provide this year. We're able to provide those community benefit tickets, those free tickets out into our community for people to come and, and we see that payback. So it's not only in revenue, but it's also in the number of people coming and some of the new data acquisition that we're utilizing and showcase of, of what that means. Certainly this digs down way further and also gives us a lot more opportunities to know who our consumer is and where they live and how we can continue to, 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 to provide them the information that the fair is coming. So a little bit of that, but also real world acquisition, data numbers of moving forward. But it gives us some real world tools as we move forward and work with our partners. And I'll talk in a moment and I saw Chris Dodi from Rhodes Department and the tremendous work he does. Gives us some opportunity to work with them and provide some trend reporting and ideas of what's coming next. So next slide if you could, Eric. This is a 21-year admission trend and I use 21 years because that's the number of fairs we've had since we've moved to the new, new property. And you can see the tremendous growth that the property has seen over years. Certainly a few anomaly years where weather or other actions have impacted us in, I think 2008 and some other years. But you also see that growth trend line that we're seeing moving forward. And I think that says that we're, we're 100% moving in the right direction and where we need to go and that we're able to continue to attract new attendees each and every year. And we continue to believe that this will move forward. Certainly not at the growth that we saw between 20, or 2018 and 2021, but we believe that we can continue to move that admission trend up into 23, 24 and beyond at a much slower pace, more like what we see towards the bottom of that trend line than what we saw over the last couple of years. Don't, I caution, don't get used to these phenomenal year over year increases because that's just not, we, we're not able to do that consistently. We'll start to stay out and, and have a more reasonable growth over the future, but we do see that it continues to be there. But I think the growth over the last several years is phenomenal in what we're able to do and really a testament to the hard work and, and of, of so many people, but also going back to 2000, the investment made back into the facility. We can see that, that it's really trying to, starting to pay off over these last several years.
Jeff, can you remind me, break this down a little bit? I mean, this, these dollar figures are both, the, the two factors here are the price and the number of people. And I'm under the impression that we actually did some things to curb a price control or to, you know, curb the increase in prices in the last few years. So does that mean that this, this is, this is just reflecting a huge increase in, in people who are attending?
Yeah. So this admission trend report is not adjusted for price. So certainly there's been a change in price admissions between 2000 and 2022, but between 22 and 21, the, the admission price has been stable and there was a slight increase between 2019 and, and 2021. But if I remember accurately, and I'll get you the correct number, but I believe it was about less than 4% price increase over those, between those two years. So this, it's not necessarily adjusted for that, for the adjustment in price, but it shows the, the total growth. But we've been very cognizant that there's a finite amount of entertainment dollar in the community and that we want to make sure that we're not taking advantage of our Central Oregonians, that we're providing a budget friendly opportunity for them to come out and enjoy what it is that we offer. And we'll continue to try to keep our prices as static as possible. And we were, we were glad we were able to do that despite some inflation and recognize that this was, we thought would be an investment year into the, the fair itself. And we'd see slightly some reduced down earnings for this year. So I anticipate we can probably keep our price points static moving forward to do that with, with, with maybe some minor adjustments. Certainly some of our partners will have to make some adjustments in price to adjust for inflation.
So one of the things, I guess, one of the, thank you for all that background, but one of the things I was, I was trying to ask was, you know, is, are the number of people who are coming each year kind of increasing? Or is this, is this basically just kind of a, you know, the price is going up, so?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I believe that we have, we have, we have attendance increases as well.
We do, right. So I don't have that as a graph, but going back to the prior slide, looking at the three attendance numbers, yes, we've seen that growth from about 120,000 unique attendees in 2019 to 164,000 attendees this year. So a significant number of, of additional persons attending the property.
And if we went back to 2000, I mean, we would probably see proportionally a much smaller number.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So our data acquisition allows us to go back, I believe, to 2014 at the current time with, with 100% or 99% accuracy with the program we're utilizing. It doesn't go back beyond that, but it does allow us to go back that far. So we could certainly provide a trend that looks like, shows what that growth is since that time. And I think that'd be an accurate way to show that. I'll, I'll, I'll put that together.
Well, this is a good time to, you know, thank our, our volunteers, the Redmond Rotary at the gates, our staff members that spend days out there at the fair at the gate and keeping track of everything, especially our finance group, you know, getting those gate receipts and staying organized as people are just streaming in and out all day, every day for five days. So it's quite an operation. Seeing those big numbers there, I know that that's people walking through the gates.
Yeah. So certainly we're, we're, we're not able to do this without a lot of partnerships. And Eric, if you'll go to the next slide. Right, it, it takes an entire, entire organization, entire community to put this together. We have a ton of partners, certainly the Fair and Expo team that works tirelessly on this year round, but also our, our partners with Deschutes County Fair Association who worked to, 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 to help produce this event on a year round basis on a volunteer role. But also our, the team at Deschutes County, Rhodes Department, Finance, just about every department is involved in, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office involved this year for the first time. Just about every department is involved in some way and shape, as well as some outside entities that, that allow us to be so successful, but also at a, at a measurable way or a reasonable way, price point wise. We couldn't do what we do without those, without those partners. And so we're really excited about the partnerships that we've been able to create and continue to, to move forward. One of those, certainly it's identified on this next slide is with Deschutes County Sheriff's Office and the, the new partnership with them as they took over the, the security of the, the actual event itself for the first time this year in a seamless transition and provided a significant increase in presence and, and secure feeling for our community is important. So some of the successes, we've talked a lot about those, I'll kind of bypass those. But I think one of the other ones that I talked about and I mentioned at the beginning, we have some new information is the rodeo. We made a significant change this year. We moved rodeo indoors. We made a major change and took a bit of a risk. But we have a new rodeo director, Roxy, and she did a phenomenal job of producing this year. And last, last week, we were, actually about a week and a half ago, we were awarded NPR's rodeo, large rodeo of the year for 2022. An award we've been, we've received several times in the past, but we're really excited to be honored with that award again this year and we'll provide some information on that here in, in, in the upcoming future. But especially after this year where we had such change in that area, a brand new director that oversees that event itself, a huge change in moving that inside, we're really honored to be awarded.
The fact that she got Wrangler to sponsor her, I mean, that woman worked a lot of miracles. Jeff, I noticed though on the livestock auction, I believe it was like 1.7 for the revenue. It was almost 1.8 when you add in the 87,000 for Matty's scholarship.
Yeah, so that number continues to change and grow. So that's what, on the, the, it'll be on the next slide for those that are watching here, but the youth livestock auction, the approximate number is about 1.75. That's a, that, that's the confirmed numbers, but it continues to grow. In fact, we have a number of envelopes of unopened checks in the office that we're transitioning over to the, to OSU Extension Office this week as well. So we'll just continue to see that number to, number grow.
There are more checks to be opened?
There's, there's several more, yeah. So that number's not final. We probably are maybe 30 days out from having a, a final number this year. Certainly they'll continue to cash the checks as long as they come, but that, that number's not final. So it will continue to adjust it. We anticipated we'd get close to 1.75 and then we heard we got to that number and that number will continue to adjust and, and increase. I don't want to wager as to what our final number will be, cause every time we open the mailbox, there's just more add-ons, more checks in there for that. And that's an investment into the future of agriculture and, and investment into our, our future, the leaders and, and our youth of our community. Those are our youth exhibitors who work so hard to raise those livestock products and this is their, their opportunity to showcase the hard work that they have done over the, the last semester or the last several months. And they, you, the, 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 the funds that are generated there pay back the debts they incurred in the raising of those animals and they can use those to invest in themselves and, and their next year's project. So such an important element of what it is that we do in agriculture and livestock and the ag education programs are at the forefront and, and the core of what the fair exists for. And to see that program continue to grow and grow from right around a million dollars in 2019 to, to well over 1.75 million is, is more rewarding than any of these other numbers that we see and, and representative of the, the belief in our community of what they do, of what that program is important, so.
I'm waiting to see the pictures in the Central Oregon Rancher. Yes, I know they've got to be coming perhaps next month. So, and I've already received several thank you notes. So it seems like the system is working much better this year than it has in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. So we continue to work on that and continue improvements. There was a few items on that last slide talking about the areas that we have to, to continue to improve on. Because he's in the room, I'll, I'll provide huge kudos to, to Chris Dodi and the efforts that his team put together in, in reducing down our, our delays and getting people onto and off of property, but still something that we have to work on and continue to improve. Where we have some tremendous constriction points and Chris is well aware of those, but the, the, the work he's done in reducing our wait times from over two hours to, to well under 45 minutes in the last couple of years. And himself standing out there flagging cars each night at fair is, is tremendous. So we really appreciate the work that he's done. Just a testament to the, the efforts of the entire, or the entire community and the entire county in putting that together. And certainly each fair, there's no perfect fair and we recognize that we continue to, need to improve and, and change and offer a better and more quality product to our community each and every year. So we, we reflect on that and, and take suggestions and concepts and ideas from our community, from our team, from the county very seriously. And we implement those to the degree we can as we move forward each and every year to make the fair better. And our 103rd annual fair coming up in 2023 will be even better than any other fair we've done before.
Do you have those fair dates memorized yet?
August 2nd through the 6th.
Of course he does.
Okay. And I do want to commend the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. Remember this was right after the Jefferson Fair and there were several incidents there and I know people were really concerned. So I believe that they really brought a calmness and great presence at the fair and yet a warm presence. So that was wonderful. And I know I left at 9:30 on Saturday night and there was like a four mile line of cars coming in. So thank you, Chris Dodi. It was, it was like, oh no, like yes. And then I met people the next morning who'd been in that line and they were out really late. So it, you know, the parking, the leaving, it's all really, it's improved a lot. And that's what, what we wanted to. And someday maybe we'll get 19th Street open, so that will be another access or exit point.
There you go. Couple of thoughts, as I say, I do want to absolutely thank the Sheriff's Office for having that presence. So instead of Redmond Police being kind of the lead public safety agency, the Sheriff's Office was. But I'm telling you, we were out there saying hi to sheriff's deputies that we just see in passing so quick, you know, just in their vehicle out in the roads. And we were all just hanging out, saying hi and it was so valuable. You know, they were on duty and they were making a presence, but it was also very much a social event for our public safety professionals. And then, yeah, practicing incident management maybe at the road department, right? I mean, what if there's something like a fire event or, you know, a Cascadia event, the big ones or whatever? This is it. You know, how do you take X amount of vehicles and get them in and out? So on one hand, it's a good practice. On the other hand, thank you so much for, you know, the volunteer time, the planning, the preparation and execution of those traffic activities.
Right.
I'd just say thank you for providing this amazing entertainment opportunity for our community, making it well managed, making it fiscally viable. It's, it's much appreciated.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Thank you. About Sunday afternoon, I left early Sunday afternoon and I know you were expanding your market and the entertainment opportunities Sunday afternoon and combined with discounted tickets. Was attendance strong Sunday afternoon with the greater variety of concerts that we are offering? And then will we do so? Do you see that going forward in future years?
Yeah. So for the first time in, in my knowledge of history, we offered a fifth concert, a Sunday afternoon concert and provided that as a Spanish language show to provide a more diverse offering to our community, an underserved market and certainly one that continues to, to expand and grow or, and is under, underserved as far as entertainment offerings. And so we did see some growth in the Sunday attendance. We would have loved to have seen more, but it's a, a unique market to, to penetrate in and one that we want to continue to invest in. So my anticipation, without having put the entire 2023 fair plan together at this point is that it's something that we'll, we'll try again from our researches. You know, it takes two to three years in order to be able to, to see measurable returns in that. But we did see, we grew from about 13,000 total attendees on Sunday in 2021 to a little over 18,000 in 2022. So percentage wise, a significant growth, a number of bodies wise, it's, Sunday's always been a challenged day for us to get people to come through fair. So we'll continue to, to, to figure out ways to attract people, but I think that's a market that we'll continue to, to reach out to and provide an entertainment offering to at this point.
I was able to attend that concert and I just hung out and, and obviously it, you know, a whole different culture, but I mean, it was just great. People in a great mood. It was just exciting and positive. It was really just a wonderful offering. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's really fun to be able to showcase that and, and a great opportunity opportunity for the community to come to see the different cultures that make up Central Oregon, come together at one time and a really colorful and exciting way to do that for those that were there and got to see some of that. The the and outside of just the concert, we also programmed that day very heavily with some cultural activities that were representative of that community. So it was much more than just that one concert, although it kind of got central billing. But we also had community involvement as well through Ballet Folklorico and some community entertainment as well. So it was really exciting to see that and continue to look forward to seeing that grow as well.
Right. Thank you so much, Jeff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for always stepping up. I've I've seen you rather busy this year.
We have.
Several events.
Yeah, and we look forward to seeing everyone in a couple of weeks, and we'll talk about what the the future looks like for for Fair and Expo, our our other line of business that we do each and every year, and kind of the growth and what that busyness looks like for us moving forward, and the importance of the facility as a whole, kind of to what Tony talked about. He talked about how roads department can respond to to crisis, but certainly what we can do as a as an organization and how we play that role as well.
Oh, that's right.
It's a manmade crisis, but very successful. One more note, Department of State Lands land transfer, you know, it's kind of adding to the the land at the edge of the fairgrounds, something we've been talking about for a dozen years or probably more than that even. There was a letter that was written by our Economic Development for Central Oregon folks that was just sent out. Anyway, I saw it in my email yesterday or the day before, sent to the Department of State Lands leadership. So it may be a good time to back that letter up from the Fair Board, the Fair Association, and us as a board of commissioners and say, please, let's finish this transaction that's been hanging out there. It's time to do that. So I would ask that please, you know, see if it's the right appropriate time and get a letter signed by the, you know, Fair Association and the, you know, Fair Board people. Get it to the Department of State Lands. Just an ask to finish the transaction. That's all we're talking about right now.
Absolutely. We can certainly do that. That'll be integral to our 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 next phase of development. We're talked about in the future, we're master plan discussions of planning the overall configuration of what the next century of development nor the campus itself looks like. And that's hugely important. That's kind of the one piece that we're waiting on is what that looks like. It it has a tremendous amount of impact on what it is we can do in the future, provides that buffer between us and BLM and and that light industrial complex, but allows us some opportunities that are the 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 steps necessary to address some of our challenges, parking being one of those and the the place that we provide short term housing for our and our exhibitors in a in an improved area and those sorts of things are kind of contingent on that piece.
And the swap is, you know, parcel land just south of the fairgrounds, but also the swap is with, you know, east side of Redmond, and it's in the urban growth boundary. And economic development folks are saying, hey, we're ready. We have people that are looking at this land, and it's in limbo right now. We just got to get that done.
I asked I asked Edco for that letter.
Yeah, great.
Since we're zooming out to the 90,000 foot level and talking about Fair and Expo stuff, I will connect the dots a little bit between the Terrebonne Sanitary District and and Fair and Expo funding. There's a there's a push at the Association of Oregon Counties to ask the legislature to allocate more lottery funds to direct funding of of county fairgrounds across the state. I am I have some concerns that doing so would take funds from other things that we spend lottery dollars on, like the Special Public Works Fund Program that the the folks from the Terrebonne Sanitary District are really interested in seeing provide grants to their to their project. So I just wanted to let you know, Jeff, and and, you know, we'll we'll have a chance to talk with the Fair Board, with the Fair and Expo Board about this, that I I I'm going to have a lot of questions about supporting that legislative ask before I I think it's a good idea for Deschutes County.
Absolutely. Yeah, certainly understand. And there's a finite number of dollars, and they are there to support an unlimited number of of things, and want to make sure that that those dollars are going to the best served locations. And certainly understand the questions and happy to answer those and make sure that we're providing the information that you need to be able to make the the right decision for Deschutes County and Oregon as a whole, from our perspective. So we can do that. And a great opportunity, I think, coming up in a couple of weeks. We can do that. But on my radar, I'll make sure we have the information at that time to to share with you if that be okay with you.
And I do want to bring you back to an arena level. The circuit finals for the Columbia River Professional Rodeo left for seven years. And last year, Jeff got them back, and they're here again this year. It's the 20th through the 22nd of October. So thanks, Jeff, for doing that. It's it's a great opportunity to brand Central Oregon as, you know, the Central Oregon rodeo capital. Primeville was taking that away from us, and I think we've done a great job of getting half of it back. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're excited to see that. Jeff did not do that. It's the fantastic facility that we have the opportunity to work at, that that really led that charge, but so many other people, but one of the 400 unique events that we host a year, but certainly one that's very special to 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 all of us, and we're excited to see everybody in, I think it's 15 days, October 20th through 21st, for the the end of the 2022 PRCA rodeo season in the Northwest. So, yeah, thank you for reminding.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Great. So, good. All right. Now we need to go back, need to go to item number six, our public hearing. Dave, thank you so much.
Morning, Commissioners, Dave Doyle, County Council. So you have before you, you're going to need a public hearing here in a few minutes, and you're going to be asked to consider Order Number 2022-051, which would accept the petition to form the sanitary district and set a date for a final hearing. As indicated, a petition has been submitted by folks seeking to form the Terrebonne Sanitary District. As required by state statute, staff has reviewed the petition, including the feasibility study, and determined compliance with applicable statutory requirements. Now is the time for you to hold the public hearing and determine if the identified territory can be benefited by formation of the district. Mr. Doty here to my left is going to provide the brief staff report, after which the board would open the public hearing and call for testimony. I will point out to you, this is not a land use hearing that you're a little more familiar with. So I would suggest that after Mr. Doty's staff report and after you open the public hearing, you simply call for proponents of formation of the district first, and then whoever wants to speak that doesn't that isn't associated as a proponent thereafter. There's no rebuttal associated with this, like in a land use proceeding. At the conclusion of the hearing, staff would recommend that the board approve Order Number 2022-051. That order will set a final hearing before you on November 2nd. Between then and now, folks can file written requests for an election. If the required threshold of written number of requests are are met, are submitted by the time of your hearing on November 2nd, then the board would direct this matter to an election. I believe it would probably be the May election unless there was a special election prior to that. Otherwise, on November 2nd, the board would consider an order to form the district at that time. So that's what you have before you. I'll defer to Mr. Doty. He can provide a little more content on.
Mr. Doyle, how long of testimony are time wise should we allow?
You know, that's really up to the discretion of the board and specifically the chair. I mean, I would certainly think 20 minutes ought to be adequate, 30 tops for the proponents, and then maybe three.
Oh, for everyone? Not per person, then?
Correct. Yes. 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 There's a group there represented by council, and they're sort of a spearheaded group. And if they choose to make a presentation, I would think 20 to 30 minutes would be consistent with how you the boards handled these in the past. And then anybody else wishing to speak, three to five minutes.
Okay.
So one question, just putting in scope. So this is an urban unincorporated community, original plot before land use, which gives us the opportunity and authority even have this discussion. And I'm just, you know, pointing out that in the rural, usually outside of a city, you don't even have a discussion about putting a sewer system in.
Generally so. That's correct.
So urban unincorporated community is the key to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right. Good morning, Board. Before I start, awful nice words by Jeff earlier, but he hasn't gotten our bill yet. So you probably reserve the right to come back and correct the record. So, good morning, Board. Chris Doty, Road Department Director, for the record, here to kind of bat leadoff in this process and provide a recap of Deschutes County's involvement in this process to date. At the request of stakeholders, many of whom are behind me here, Deschutes County funded an update to the sewer feasibility study for the community of Terrebonne. Study was originally performed in 1984, no action taken, updated again in 1999, no action taken. So subsequent to that, and the board direction, we hired Parametrics, a local engineering firm, and and other partners to perform the feasibility study. And that included facilitation of a of a public process and a task to develop stakeholders, people interested in in making that happen. And that happened at the onset of the pandemic in in early 2020. As the consultant and stakeholder team performed their work, unprecedented opportunities began to emerge. Pandemic assistance funding, ARPA, came on the scene. And so that presented a really good tie in of and use of ARPA consideration, because that was spelled out in in the ARPA documents, wastewater facilities, water facilities, things like that. And then, secondly, an opportunity to partner with the City of Redmond to provide treatment capacity in their nearby Redmond Wetlands Complex. That that emerged as a as a concept. That that Wetlands Complex is currently under design by the city, and they're they're moving forward in a positive direction. Just a great opportunity. It's it's closer to Terrebonne than most of Redmond is to that Wetlands Complex. So those opportunities stoked momentum in this feasibility process as things went along, such that it became the Spring Board for formation of a of a sanitary district proposal that we're here to talk about today. The Board of County Commissioners voted to invest $300,000 in ARPA funds to cover preliminary design and legal expenses. It's kind of seed money to help get this group going. There's a lot of expense associated with trying to form a district, and this just helped helped, you know, again, that momentum continue forward. The Board also entered into a MOU with the City of Redmond to invest a million dollars in in resources, ARPA or other, to fund additional system capacity in in Redmond's Wetlands Complex to kind of placeholder that capacity for for Terrebonne. In addition to that, Representative Bonham provided $1 million in state coronavirus relief funding from his legislative discretionary allocation to fund collection system improvements beneath the new pavement that we'll be putting down with the ODOT County Transportation Project occurring in Terrebonne here in a few years. So we've been ashamed to have had all this momentum and not had dollars in time to get infrastructure underneath, you know, those those roads that are being rebuilt. However, Board, for any of us to move forward, you need we need the local champions to step forward and inform that sanitary district. And that's the the item before you today. So with that, I'll I'll sit down and allow the group of petitioners and stakeholders, the champions, if you will, to provide their testimony in support of the sanitary district formation request. Thank you.
Great. I do want to open the public hearing at this time, and I do want to acknowledge that Parker Vernon took a petition around for me originally, I believe it was in like 2019, and got a lot of signatures. So thank you to to everyone who's who's been part of this. It seems like everything is in alignment. Go ahead, and please identify yourself for the record.
Okay.
And give your address, too.
My address?
Well, we need it for the record. This just shows, Guy, that you are representing 30 families. If you can just give an address in Terrebonne or address where you live.
What's the address, sir? So the address for the property is 8045 North Highway 97, Terrebonne, Oregon 9760.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for all your support, the Commissioners. I think I've talked to each one of you about the need we have. As I was sitting here, listening to Jeff's testimony, I, you know, I've been in Central Oregon for 30 years. I've owned the park since 1992. And I remember the old fairgrounds, and there was a big controversy whether, you know, people should go forward and invest in the new fairgrounds. And there was a vote, and it prevailed. And it's just a really good example of how public investment pays off. And I believe Terrebonne, I know Terrebonne is at a point where if it doesn't get sewer, it's going to change dramatically for the worst. I've I've had septic problems almost since the day I bought that. I was unaware of what septic systems were. I was from Seattle area, was unfamiliar with them. I've learned way too much about them. I did not know what a drill hole was. The DEQ has informed me for the last probably almost 30 years that they want me to get off of it. I've had two different engineering firms and submitted one application to the EQ, and everything gets denied because it's just on a solid rock. So we've we've kind of patched this thing together. Todd Cleveland tells me that an average septic system should last about 20 years. And so, you know, we've far exceeded what, you know, the it's obsolete. It's functionally obsolete. There's no way to do it. These 30 families, you know, if the park was to close, virtually would have they would become homeless. There's, as far as I know, there's not very many places where you can live for approximately $525 a month, including water, sewer, and garbage. And so I believe I've had a conversation with Commissioner Chang about the possibility of expanding that, which until we get sewer is an impossibility. There's between six and seven acres of undeveloped land there that that there is an opportunity to create more affordable housing. And that's what we're looking forward to. Either myself or someone else could do that. And like, anyway, thank you very much for your your support. It was Patty's. It came it was her first job, all this stack of paper that landed on her desk, and and she's been wonderful to work for. Chris, I mean, it's like four gold stars in my book. He's he's really and and Parametrics. So I hope that I hope that you guys will go forward with this project because it's much needed. And then my son, Parker, has done a lot of the legwork, petitioning, helping to form. He's he's been the one that kind of boots on the ground, who went out. And the general consensus was the people in Terrebonne were against that. And he went out and door knocked nearly 100 doors. And he'll be able to explain the petitioning. And then he went back out in order to get the petition to actually form it. And so that's what he's going to speak about. And thank you again.
No, thank you, Guy.
Yeah, thank you for having us. I'm Parker Vernon. I'm representing the Rusta Grange Mobile Home Park as well. I managed that park for four years, a big fan of the Terrebonne area. Initially, when it came down to setting this whole thing up, I spoke with several county commissioners, and the general consensus was the people of Terrebonne are not interested in any type of sewer, that it's fine the way that it is. And no matter what, it isn't something that anybody wants to hear about. So I took it upon myself to go talk to the people of Terrebonne. And I gathered 100 signatures. I talked to hundreds of people in the community. And the general consensus of talking to the people, at least the first go around, was everybody that owns a home or lives in the Terrebonne area is very aware that septic and septic issues are a giant detriment to the area. Everyone has had a septic issue, or they are going to have one, and they know that they are on a kind of ticking time bomb for a large bill to be going into their backyard. There were several people I talked to that were out of their first septic system onto their second reserve, and they didn't have the fiscal capacity to put any type of repairs in. And they were literally waiting for essentially their home to be condemned for not being able to mitigate waste. Once I got those signatures of people being at least interested in seeing what this project could do, we got kind of this whole thing rolling and started working with Parametrics, as well as the county commissioners, to see what what we can do. The second time around for the formation of the district, I didn't talk to a single person, business owner nor otherwise, that wasn't interested in seeing this go in. That everyone is very aware that there's a minimum of about a $35,000 bill to get a new septic system in versus a hookup. And I think the most poignant thing was said to me by a 91-year-old man that I talked to that had lived in Terrebonne since he was born. As he said, there was one building on the west side of Highway 97, and Terrebonne's been changing the entire time that I've been there. But you don't plant a tree at my age to sit under the shade. You do it so that the people and the next generation have something good in their life. So that's really what it comes down to. It isn't something that the area is unaware of. It's not something that they know that they don't need. They know that it's something that the community desperately needs because it's something that's going to benefit in the long term.
Great. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Parker.
Thank you for bringing people together and helping them look forward.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Good morning. My name's Lauren Redman. Address is 8431 11th Street in Terrebonne. I said before you this morning, representing 37 employee owners at Oliver Lemons. It's the only grocery store in Terrebonne. We are 100% employee owned company. To give you some background, our average rate of pay is over $22 an hour. We provide company paid benefits and discounts. Since the inception of our company in that location, which was January of 2020, we've provided tens of thousands of dollars back to the community, primarily in food donation. My point is we're in an average employer, an above-average employer, that provides living wage that creates an environment in which our employees can thrive and participate in their community. Less than three months after purchasing our business, we became best friends with Todd and Larry, much to my dismay, because we had a total failure of our septic system and drain field, which is pretty damn shocking to know that your doors can be closed at the drop of a hat or something else. So we learned a lot more about septic and drain field than we ever wanted to. We've spent over a half a million dollars on the septic and drain field. That is a system that is not fail-safe. If our system were to fail and there is a very real possibility of that happening, even after all of the expense and time and effort we've incurred and due to the geology of the Terrebonne area, Terrebonne's only grocery store and an employer of 37 people would close, period. In addition to that half a million dollars on the actual system, we have spent over $51,000 in pumping fees and over $8,000 in monitoring and testing of that system. Make no mistake, this is a huge amount of money to our company. I was born and raised in Bend. I am a fifth-generation Oregonian. My daughter is a sixth-generation Oregonian. If I had to choose, sorry, fair, but if I have to choose money being allocated towards a fair or any other fun thing, I'm going to choose that those funds that, to Patty's point, we all pay for in our taxes, I'm going to choose that those go towards this project. I strongly encourage the Central Oregon community to not just support but encourage the ongoing efforts of this group behind me and others that weren't able to attend. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'm sure it was a shock. What, you'd been, you owned the building for three months?
No, we're renters.
Oh, you are renters of the building? Oh, gosh.
So we've spent that kind of money on a property we don't own nor were disclosed to, that ultimately this drain field was illegally installed under the cover of darkness, as it were. So when you visit our property, which is, I have to say, no offense to my neighbors and friends back there, but we have the best landscaping in Terrebonne.
Point of pride.
Half of which is, you'll see decomposed granite and oftentimes we'll hear, gosh, you ought to add more parking. Well, that's really cute suggestion. We can't. So that's the dead side of the drain field that cannot be resurrected. So the other half that's covered with grass is the active drain field. And if it were to die, we're out of business. Our doors are closed. And I know that Todd will speak after me. He will reiterate what I'm saying as will Larry with the DEQ, who I don't believe is in attendance today. So yeah, a lot of money spent on a building we don't own in addition to an interior remodel that we will spend three-quarters of a million dollars on or have spent because it's open now. And we have a porta potty outside our business because we can't have the volume that was once produced in that location. So that doesn't include the porta potty charges monthly.
Well, you've made a good justification for this effort. Thank you very much. I mean, and we know this. I mean, this is good that we're all comparing notes here.
Well, and that communication remaining open, knowing that ODOT's going to be doing their big project, you know, the timing is pretty darn good to move this forward. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, could I ask one more question?
Yes.
So if, if the, if the sewer connection moves forward, how much of the current space that's, that's dedicated to drain field will you need for wastewater disposal purposes? I mean, will it, will that still be there as backup or?
That I am now in this. It's my understanding that with a direct connection, then we would be able to utilize what is drain field now as something else. I'll call it parking lot.
Thank you.
I hope, because I'd really like to grow our business.
Yeah.
Profitability is not a bad thing when you are 100% employee-owned.
It's, it's really outstanding in the fact that you pay an average of, what, $22 an hour?
Over 22.
$2 an hour, yeah, that's really tremendous.
With company-paid benefits. So we're really prideful of that and we can't do it without people shopping with us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. I believe Tim Brown is going to be on Zoom. Do we see him, Eric?
All right. Sorry about that, but first time presenting on Zoom. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. So good morning. My name is Tim Brown and I own a property at 8115 Sixth Street in Terrebonne. And my family and I first moved to Terrebonne in 1994. Both my children attended Terrebonne Elementary School. First want to thank all you guys for your volunteer and community involvement. It's been very supportive and I appreciate the efforts. So I'm pleased that the county has provided both financial and technical support towards this establishment of the Terrebonne Sewer District. Thank you very much. My experience with Terrebonne has historically served Central Oregon with affordable housing along with more rural community feeling. Commercial District of Terrebonne serves much of the outline community as well as a very large volume of traveling public that passes through and/or is attracted by the outdoor recreation of Smith Rock State Park. I've noted along with many of my associates, the decline or stagnation of the community of Terrebonne over these past years. And I believe this stagnation is primarily a result of the problematic sewer and limited availability for land for sewer. It's always been my belief while my children were going to school and I feared it had happened, that at some point in Terrebonne, someone was going to get seriously sick and that was going to be the only way we could get a Terrebonne sewer system installed at the risk of somebody actually falling, falling ill. I feared with this, this would happen over many months and years, but thankfully not at this point. And I'm pleased to hear that you guys are taking steps to make this a positive result instead of a negative outcome for a public health issue. The significant replacement costs of the numerous and increasing failing septic systems, including both commercial and residential system, makes a permanent solution the appropriate choice and demonstrates the county commission that is concerned about citizens and their future. The TSAG group has been actively meeting now for over a couple of years and has done significant outreach within the community, which was alluded to earlier. My, the current volunteers for the board formation include myself, a civil engineer, Mr. Guy Vernon, who spoke previously and has a long relationship with the community, Mr. Kirsten Urdin, who took a chance on Terrebonne by establishing the Terrebonne Depot Restaurant and is exploring funding options for the group. Mr. Dylan Stott, who lives in Terrebonne, is actively involved in the community happenings. And Mariah Patel, who is also taking a chance on the future of Terrebonne by investing in the commercial district. While these people have volunteered at the time, we would welcome other board members or a community involvement as is appropriate. Again, thank you for taking a strong step towards preventing the likelihood of a future health hazard, along with the betterment of affordable community housing. Is with great support and hope for this community that I urge you to help us continue to progress and provide future improvements to the Terrebonne community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim, for joining us today on Zoom.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's appreciated. And now I believe, what, Todd Cleveland? Yes?
Todd Cleveland, onsite wastewater supervisor in the Community Development Department. As I sit here and listen to these folks, I feel very honored that they've asked me to come and talk to, talk to you about the issues for the onsite systems in, in Terrebonne. Most of these folks have had really negative interactions with me with bad news, so I feel pretty honored that they've asked me to come and talk. As they've all said, you know, these, this is an urban, unincorporated community. Well, the reason for that is it's very high density, right? So in most circumstances, we've got rural infrastructure in an urban community. In addition to that, we've got really small lots. We have very poor soil conditions. I think the, the term Terrebonne was a marketing campaign by whoever created that name because there's about 18 inches of soil over solid rock. So there's very poor soil conditions for onsite wastewater systems. So most of these properties have been using onsite systems their entire life and most of these systems are nearing the end of their lives and the solutions are very limited. As time has gone on, as Oliver Lemons was discussing, the, the, the use of the property has increased, the demands, because the community needs more, more of these kinds of facilities have increased those uses and it's creating these, these failures. And then trying to fix these systems, we've been doing reasonable installations which aren't really to code. And they're intended to, you know, correct a, a health hazard that's ongoing and keep the business operating or keep people in their homes. And so we do the best we can. However, that puts a lot of constraints on those uses, right? So they can't expand their uses. They're living on the edge, like everyone has discussed here today. And then Rustic Canyon has a sewage drill hole, which is an injection well where the sewage goes into the ground. And I don't think that it takes a, a environmental health specialist to tell you that that's a bad idea, right? When we use, most of our drinking water comes from the ground. So overall, I see the development of a sewer district as part of the, the path to a solution for this community that will, you know, certainly I like the idea because it will reduce the number of negative conversations I have with people. But it, and make my job a little bit easier, but it is a solution. And when, when I'm doing these onsite systems or we're trying to come up with solutions, these solutions are very sketchy, right? They're not, they're not good solutions and so they're limited in, in their life and potential health hazards. And so I think it's a very positive step forward for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, for those words. Yes, isn't it amazing? It's been, what, four years now and we're, we're getting closer and appreciate hearing from you today representing. Were your work in all of Deschutes County? Thank you. How many years have you been with Deschutes County?
I've been here over 23 years.
Okay. Just want to commend you for that service. It sounds like you have a pretty good relationship with people, even when you're there with bad news. So thanks, Todd.
I hope so.
Yes, thank you. Ryan Rudnick?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Rudnick and as stated, I'm a civil engineer with Parametrics, the consulting firm hired by Deschutes County to conduct the Terrebonne wastewater feasibility study. The economic, public safety and environmental health risks with the continued use of onsite wastewater disposal systems are serious. Installation of a wastewater system would help businesses operate reliably and would facilitate new housing, jobs and commerce in the community. Although the matter at hand is formation of the district, I'll generally describe the findings of the study and the system that the district will help to develop once formed. Several alternatives were considered for the collection, treatment and disposal of wastewater in Terrebonne. Based on a variety of criteria, including cost, operations and maintenance, community interests, sustainability and risk factors, the recommended alternative for Terrebonne is a septic tank effluent pump, or STEP, collection system and a transmission main that discharges to the Redmond Wetlands Complex for treatment. This recommended design alternative allows for the reuse of existing septic tanks. It minimizes rock excavation. It facilitates future collection system expansion and it does not require a new wastewater treatment plant to be cited, constructed and maintained within Terrebonne. In response to public input, the service area was broken up into three separate phases, which you'll see on the boundary map included in the prospective petition or in the, the final petition. Phase A is focused on providing sewer service to the commercial core area and nearby residential areas where it appears the need for sewer is most urgent and there's the highest potential for voluntary connection to the system. Subsequent phases B and C primarily include residences that can later be annexed into the sewer system and service area when the majority of residents in those areas request service and additional funding is secured for system expansion. Based on the findings of the study, we believe it is feasible to design and construct a wastewater system that serves the commercial core of Terrebonne and also has the capacity to be expanded to serve additional areas within the community boundary. The key to implementing the proposed wastewater system is the district's ability to acquire low-interest loans and grant funds. In addition, the district will need to secure a high level of customer participation in the phase A service area in order to secure loan funding and generate sufficient revenues that can cover operating expenses and debt service. Addressing these two factors will be critically important to, to keeping connection fees and monthly user rates affordable for Terrebonne customers. Once formed, the district will be eligible to apply for a variety of public infrastructure grants, which will help minimize the financial burden on its customers. The district board will also consider strategies to encourage connections within the service area through early hookup incentives, SDC payment plans and financial aid programs. The county's support of the Terrebonne sewer planning efforts to date are much appreciated and we invite continued support with the formation of the sanitary, Terrebonne sanitary district and future pursuits of project funding. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions and Linda will.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for being part of this process for a couple of years.
Thoughts real quick. So Ryan, thank you very much for joining us. So you're, you're a third-party consultant, kind of putting the big picture together, correct? That's, that's the Parametrics report here. Also, just for specifically, I know that there's some subsystems already in the area. I think Angus Acres and Terrebonne Estates. So those are proposed to be included in future phases.
Future phases, yeah.
Is there kind of a natural value in connecting those systems to this system in the future? You know, have you looked into that?
Yeah.
Is there standalone systems already?
Correct. Standalone systems, they're, they're, they have different types of systems and, and different scenarios there that have a different kind of value proposition. Angus Acres is, is pretty much built out and the septic system and drain fields are kind of integrated into the neighborhood. Terrebonne Estates, on the other hand, has a large area that is occupied by their drain fields. And so the owner of, of that property could benefit from connecting the community to sewer and then that property would then be developable for additional units.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, you're, were you the primary author for the feasibility study, the economic feasibility study? I, I have some questions and I just kind of preface this. I would, I just want to say to everyone, I am very much in favor of the formation of this sanitary district and very much in favor of this project moving forward. I, I have concerns about the economic feasibility of the, of the project and essentially about, you know, how you pay for it. Reading through the feasibility study, there's a high reliance on grant funding to be able to put this project within reach of the, of the folks who are going to be hooked up or are going to be the utility fee payers for the system. There was, so there's a high reliance on grants. And then in the description of the grant funds that you're going to look into, there were all sorts of explanations of why this system might, this district might not be eligible for these various grant programs. So I, that, that concerned me. So I would, I would love to hear a little bit more about what degree of confidence you have that, that some of these, these grant programs will be available for this project. And then if, you know, if the, if the likelihood that these grant funds can be secured is, is not so high, if we're really looking at scenario two, you know, which relies much more heavily on, on, on hookup fees and, you know, monthly, monthly service fees, I, you know, I want to get a, a better feel for how, how feasible that is for, for people in Terrebonne. Kind of stepping beyond that, you know, one of my other questions looking at the economic feasibility study was the assumption about the number of hookups per year in. feel for how, how feasible that is for, for people in Terrebonne. Kind of stepping beyond that, you know, one of my other questions, looking at the economic feasibility study, was the assumption about the number of hookups per year in, in coming years. Because if I'm tracking correctly, the, the million dollars that the county allocated towards the, the treatment, the Redmond constructed treatment wetlands, those million dollars basically will be able, will be used to offset the hookup fees for, you know, for people who are, the people who are hooking up from Terrebonne. And it seemed like a million dollars would only get you so far before people started having to pay, you know, that, a certain number of people would get in, and then the people that are beyond that point would have to pay the full hookup fees. And I guess I have a lot of questions about, at the point where the million dollars is used up, how are you going to convince people to pay the million, you know, pay whatever they have to pay for the hookup fees, when they just saw a whole bunch of other people get, you know, get hooked up, you know, on, on someone else's dime? I mean, it seems like you, you could have some real barriers to, to hookups beyond the original one hundred and sixty. So, I, so I guess I had questions about that assumption in, you know, in these, in these, in these pro formas for, for the project. And so, if you could speak about that as well. Sorry, I just asked a number of questions, and you could run through them one by one.
Okay, I'll try my best. First question about grant funding. Certainly, there's, there are unknowns with regard to which grant programs will be a good fit for us. We've been meeting with Business Organ and other funding agencies since we started this project to stay front of mind to them. We, this project is flagged on their list of public projects, and so they've been aware of this. And so, they're tracking, this is one of many project, along with many other projects, to prepare budgets and for grants and loans for the years ahead. And some, some programs might not be well-suited, but some are very well-suited for this project, like the Water Wastewater Program with IFA. And then, Clean Water State Revolving Fund offers really low-interest rates that, that the district is likely eligible for. And there's more talk now about forgivable loans with the influx of funding coming from the federal government. And so, while it's not completely clear yet, at this point, what those grant programs will be, we look forward to having more of those questions answered at the one-stop meeting, which we can attend once the district is formed, and then there's an eligible entity to sit before an assembly of funding agencies and, and get a better idea of which programs are suited for. And so, those are the next steps that we'll be able to, to take, once the district is formed. And then, the second question about the Terrebonne, or the Redmond interconnection and whatnot, while those, so those SDCs are seen and modeled as an expense to the district, not to the customers, if that makes sense. So, the district is responsible for paying Redmond, not customers. And so, in a sense, they're a liaison between, or they're, they're between the customer and, and Redmond. In that sense, they'll collect rates and connection fees, and then the district will be responsible for reimbursing Redmond for disposal of, of their treatment. To Redmond, they get one customer, and that's the Terrebonne sanitary district.
Mm-hmm.
Once that, the million-dollar grant for capacity is used up, then what we've discussed with Redmond is an increased flow rate charge per thousand cubic feet per month. So, each month, they can both review the water meter and see you pass this much flow through, and then at this rate, this is what the charge will be. Based on our projections, really the toughest point is the beginning for the system. And those initial, the ability to cover the debt service and operations with the initial customers. As the customer base grows, then the revenues grow with that, and, and there's more of an, but debt service remains the same, right? It's, it's like your mortgage staying the same over the years, right? It's similar to that, in that the financial strength grows with the system. And once we reach near five hundred connections or so, and that capacity is reached, then the district will be in a better position to pay that rate surcharge that will help to cover the additional capacity beyond that, that initial amount.
Are you saying that people will not have to pay hookup fees?
No, not necessarily. It's just, it's, it's not directly linked to what the district has to pay Redmond.
Okay.
It's more so calculated from reimbursement and improvement fees related to the infrastructure.
Okay. So, who, who will, who will and who won't have to pay hookup fees when? At what point?
All customers will need to pay hookup fees.
Okay.
As is typical for a wastewater system like.
Okay. Okay, so the initial, the initial one hundred and sixty will, will be required to pay hookup fees?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we provide estimates for that in here. Granted, these are estimates, and, and these financial details will be confirmed, you know, once we get a better idea of how much grant funding comes to the table, and what actual construction costs are, and the extent of participation in the system. So, there's a lot of variables, but we, we did our best to put a financial scenario together that kind of presents a roadmap for how the system could operate, and the numbers involved. Does that?
That was, that was very helpful. Thank you.
All right.
My name is Linda Swerengen. I reside in Redmond, Oregon. And being a former Deschutes County Commissioner, I feel like I'm just coming full circle, because in nineteen ninety-eight, we had Terrebonne citizens and Todd Cleveland's office come to us and say, "We gotta do something with Terrebonne." And so, it was Nancy Schlangen, Bob Nipper, myself, and then Dennis Luke, and Tom DeWolfe. And we said, "Hey, let's go ahead and update this feasibility study." And, and of course, at that time, we just didn't have the momentum to take it to the next level like we have here today. And I've got to say, we've got a fantastic group of folks that have been involved in this from day one. And Chris Doty has been fantastic. And Ryan Rudnick has done a fantastic job writing heard on this group, and coming up with a plan that works. And, and I think the thing that's really important here is, and I appreciate your questions, Commissioner Chang, we're starting with the business district, because they have the greatest need. And I tell you what, you want to see a problem with citizens, close down Oliver Lemons, close down the restaurants in town, and then you got a real serious problem. And so, I really think the way this is phased in will make the most sense. And I also think that, based on the fact that once the district's formed, you're going to all of a sudden start having more interest in developing affordable housing and expansion, that, that people just have said, "Oh, well, you know, we, we don't have a sewer system, so why waste the time and effort just figuring out where to go?" So, I, I really think that we've underestimated the hookup fees. And the one thing I would suggest is keep the momentum going. We thank you for the financial contributions and the efforts that you've made so far. But don't let the momentum slow down, even as we have to wait for an election of the board, because we have got some fantastic folks. And, and what Ryan has done has been wonderful. Let's keep it going, so that as soon as that Board of Directors is elected, they can move forward and, and get this thing off the ground. Because I, I believe in this case, like Rick Eishem used to say, who was the legal counsel for Deschutes County, "Linda, it doesn't all happen in one day, but there'll come a time where all the stars are going to align, and it'll happen." And I really think that's where we are right now with this project in Terrebonne.
Oh, Ryan, I did want to ask. I, thank you for reminding me, Chris Doty, about representing Bonham's funding for Terrebonne, because originally, they thought it was going to go to Smith Rock, the parking, and no, 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 we needed to go somewhere else. So, where is that million dollars being applied? Can you just give me a little reference to that?
Yeah, so, ODOT. Yeah, absolutely. Good question. Thank you. ODOT has incorporated sewer design into their design packages, and I've been involved with that. Some folks in our office are, are doing that design. So, we're working collaboratively, collaboratively with the folks on that plan set. We're at the preliminary plan spec and estimate stage with ODOT, and it includes sewer main lines within the roadway improvements associated with ODOT. And so, I think it's great to see that kind of synergy between projects and interagency cooperation. And that, the timing was impeccable there, because if we missed.
The stars were aligned.
They were.
Yeah, if the roadway went in, it would have been too late, you know, to cost-effectively put in.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Rep. Bonham, for that.
Well, and, yeah, so, former Deschutes County Commissioner Linda Swerengen, thank you very much. That was very motivating, thinking about, okay, you know, the stars are aligned. There is investment that's being put in right now, before the fact. We got us to this point. Thank you very much for the parametrics report analysis on this. This is setting the table. This is exactly what we're doing. And there's a lot of history here, too. So, thank you so much for putting it in perspective.
I believe that's the list of people.
Yes.
But I do have emails from Krista Yurden and from Ian Yurden in full support of the project. So, thank you to those two emails. Is there anyone else in the room, then, that wanted to speak? Yes. Would you care?
Keep him a little casual. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Didn't wear the, I think. So, my name is Steve Bowen. I live at nine three one eight Seventeenth Lane in Angus Acres. And just kind of wanted to share a couple things. I believe you guys got a bunch of petitions that had came through by people who are not against the system, but want to look at it in a broader manner than what's being done. I believe you already received those. So, I'll just kind of write out what we got going that I have here. And it says, "I do, I do not believe it's fair that the grant money go to the initial phase one, then having to have others in phase two and three asked to join their sewer district and pay full price for the installation of the infrastructure." This was a common theme that I ended up having when I went around and was gathering petitions. And they thought, "Why is the money going here versus put the infrastructure in first, and not have to pay the hundred or hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot to have that line extended?" So, with that, I'll just read through this. "This appears to be self-serving, since these are revenue-generating properties. It is most likely going to get these initially. The cost of the, of having a waste-type system is part of the operating costs of owning a business. Any grant monies, along with any other county money, should be used to put in all of the lines through the phases initially. If it becomes necessary for any property to hook up to the sewer, the lines would already be in right, in the right of the way of the roads, and each individual residence or business would then be responsible for their hookup and the cost of running the pipe to the trunk lines. The idea that the county would allow a sewer district to be formed by a special interest group of phase-one businesses, and a couple of the owners, or property owners, would be in control of what happens in phase two and three, is not inclusive of all the other property owners in Terrebonne. The elephant in the room was brought up by Mr. Chang, when he asked the couple of questions about who's going to pay for the rest of the infrastructure, when the initial money was going to the phase-one group. So, with that, I'll keep going with that, excuse me. Why should these phase-two and three need to ask permission to join the phase-one sewer district? We've been told that the sewer district will be basically phase-one. Anybody in phase-two and three will have to ask to join that. It's not just a given. So, again, and then, why would we have to bear all the costs associated with the extension of the lines? As per the news, Z21 stories described how the trailer cord was going to expand once this new sewer system goes into place. How self-serving is this? All property owners, both residential and businesses, were required to do their own due diligence when purchasing property. We all bear our own responsibility in purchasing property, and should not rely on the taxpayers to bail us out without serving the whole community. Deschutes County has identified that if Angus Acres properties that are currently on the septic fail, they'll need to hook up to their community sewer system or repair, if allowed. The system has already been identified that it may or may not be at capacity by DEQ. Last reports have shown that Angus Acres Community Sewer is not in compliance with DEQ standards. And that's the sewer, the sewer part, not just the septic's. In Angus Acres alone, this impacts approximately a hundred-plus homes. How is this less important or critical than the phase-one business concerns? This is impetus of having to put lines through our community before anyone is allowed to hook up. The county should take a look at who approved these systems initially, and what burden that will take on the approval department that allowed this to go in. If the community septic system fails in Angus Acres, the homeowners of Angus Acres have to have, have to have this system fixed. Right now, there, there are folks that are going through this. And with a system at capacity, or near capacity, and already not in compliance, we're talking six, seven-hundred-thousand-dollar homes that are not going to have a septic system, or any type of wastewater system in there. Okay. So, all property owners will need to share through disclosure also, if we go to sell our homes, because they'll be in phase-two and phase-three. And if they go to sell this in the future, they're going to have to disclose that they are in a proposed sewer district, and what that cost will be. So, again, that's just another thing for people, if their system doesn't fail, if the system, their septic system doesn't fail, the sewer system doesn't fail, they're still going to have to disclose this. If the county is truly concerned with the community of Terrebonne, the issues regarding failing septic system, we need to take a step back and look at alternatives with the grant monies, and what the county participation is. Some folks have already paid a price to be on a private system that could fail it at some time. Does this seem fair to these folks to have to pay twice, when others are getting it paid for by the monies already spent by the county, and also what is being proposed by the grant? And again, Mr. Chang, I think you, you brought that to our attention. It's easy to stop now and consider what the true ramifications are concerning special interests. The needs of the whole community, and how the perception of the county interest looks towards what is best for the whole, should be explored. It was a very short time ago that the Terrebonne refinement plan was discussed at length, with concerns of the community, and the impact of all the residents and the businesses. The refinement plan was, will be a large impact to the quality of life. How can anyone with a straight face that this, again, will not impact the average homeowner, if they are allowed, or if they're asked to bear the cost of the extension lines? I see a great division of the community to occur. This has been brought to my attention a couple times, when I was out getting some petitions. I know that the county believes that inclusion, diversity, and the fairness is a backbone of our way of life. I ask you to take a look at the perception this endeavor is projecting. A grassroots effort has already begun to, to not boycott the plan, but to come into this and say, "Why are we not doing inclusive, and putting all the infrastructure in throughout all the neighborhoods, throughout all the businesses, and doing that initially, before we start just hooking up for a phase-one?" Most of the residents in Terrebonne are either working lower-end wage jobs, or on a fixed income, such as myself being retired. And cannot afford to have to do a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars a foot, when we've already heard that eighteen inches down is pure rock, and they're going to have to drill, and they're going to have to put the pipes in the infrastructure for the other places. So, again, I don't think this will be, when I say the boycott thing, is not boycotting what we need to have a system in. But I don't think we need to look at the bear of it being put on the taxpayers that own residential property in the other areas of the, of the community, having to bear all that cost. So, again, I'm more than willing to answer any questions on this. It's just, I do know that there is some huge concerns out there. I think you could, if you start looking at if our own sewer system out there in Angus Acres is up and about, it's great. But I'm also on a regular septic. I've worked with Todd on that. And I know that I do have the ability to hook up to the community sewer. But the problem with the community sewer is, it is at full capacity right now. And so, being able to hook up to it and actually do it, is probably not going to happen. So, what do I do with a, and I'm not, it's not a, money's money. What do I do with a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar piece of property that has the infrastructures all on there, if I don't have sewer? I am no different than any other person. So, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I do appreciate you guys' time and being able to share this. I do hope that you guys will take that into consideration, especially with the petitions that were handed in to you, for folks that don't say they don't want it to stop. They just want it to have a, maybe a restart, and be able to look at the whole community versus just the smaller portion.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Very much. I'll just acknowledge, I mean, that we're looking to align the stars the best we can. We're looking to create something that's going to move forward. Getting that infrastructure to the Redmond system is a foundational piece to this. So, you know, thank you for bringing up the rest of the story, right? I mean, and it's always been like this for twenty, thirty, forty years. Obviously, this has been a, a struggle. What are been like this for 20, 30, 40 years. Obviously, this has been a struggle. What are we going to do? So let's work on it together.
Thank you.
Yeah. Please don't leave yet. So you've raised some important questions about kind of how people in, in Phase C or Phase B might, might or might not have to pay more to, to hook up. But I mean, when, when I was just asking, when I was just questioning Ryan, I mean, he, he said that, you know, everyone in Phase A is going to have to pay hookup fees. So I, you know, I don't think that, I think that clarification, you know, sets aside one of my concerns or resolves one of the concerns that I initially had. And then I guess I'd also just like to say that of the funds that the county has invested so far, you know, in the feasibility study, essentially, and in the pipe between Terrebonne and the Redmond Treatment Wetlands, that serves, that serves any of the phases. It's not, it's not a, I mean, the pipe between, between Terrebonne and Redmond and the Redmond Treatment Wetlands, that's not an investment that's made that only serves the people in Phase A. They're building that pipe big enough to eventually serve Phase A, B, and C. So that's, you know, I want to just clarify that if there's any perception that, you know, the investments that the county has made so far are only serving a portion of town versus, versus the rest. Similarly, the feasibility study, the feasibility study looked at the whole, the whole of Terrebonne and then, you know, and, and then basically chunked it up into bite-sized pieces to, to build out. And I would be interested if, you know, if you're, if you're right there on the, on the north end of, of Phase A, I would be interested to, to know whether it would, it would be possible essentially to, to, to send the, you know, you know, send the petition, I believe that's what you would call this, is a petition, send this around, you know, for a little bit larger area and potentially add a chunk onto Phase A rather than, you know, kind of, rather than, you know, kind of stalling out the whole project until you can look at it in a more comprehensive way. And I'm, I'm not sure procedurally whether we're allowed to bring people back up or not. But is that, is
It's okay.
Is that chair discretion?
Yes, it's, I've been
So we may open up a community conversation here, but let's do it in an orderly fashion if we do that.
No, I, I would like to respond back to that. I, I agree 100%. It's not to stop anything. It's just to reevaluate the whole thing. And I, it was nothing to do with the county funds going in there. You've got to bring the trunk line in. I understand that. But where it is, is the hookup fees. If I, and I'm not 100% sure on this. I believe the hookup fees is when you actually hook up. It's not putting in the infrastructure that goes with it. And so when they're looking at, if the county's going to, we looked at the $5 million with the, with the initial refinement, I believe it's $10 million that were given to ODOT now. With that, it was, what are you giving back also, ODOT, to make the project right? And I looked at that as, some people have, if we're getting grant money, not the county money, the grant money, is it self-serving just a small section of the thing? Or should it be serving the whole community when every time, everything I've heard so far has been the community of Terrebonne, the residents and the businesses of Terrebonne? We're not, we're talking the whole community, not just the small. So not take the county money away from it. The hookup fees is one thing when you actually are pumping the poop into the, into the drain, right, or into the sewer system. We're talking the infrastructure of putting the main trunk lines through all the neighborhoods. And I agree with you on the other part of it, the community out there, with the sewer system that we have now, do we need to have a larger chunk put into that system to be able to have the, all the people say, yes, we, we're, we want to look at being part of Phase One? Because we are Phase Three right now out in there. And I believe we were developed as Phase Three because we had our own community sewer system that, again, in 2019, DEQ said we were not in compliance in 2019.
Are you in compliance today?
I don't, I, I believe Todd might be able to answer that one.
So, simple question. Are you supportive of creating a district?
I am supportive of
That's what we're here about.
Yeah, no, I
And there's, because there's going to be moving parts all around this.
I'm definitely supportive of a district. But I know the folks that we've talked to want to be inclusive into it with the infrastructure, with the grant money being in there. And then with the possibility, when our systems fail, because my home now is, what, 15, 16 years old, when my, my system fails, I have the same, or we have the same ability to hook up right then with the infrastructure being part of the initial grant money. Being looking at the whole inclusiveness versus saying, yeah, I've got to extend down C Avenue to 16th, down Angus Court, onto 17th Lane at $100 or $150 a foot.
What did you say your home address was, Steve?
9318 17th Lane. And that's in Angus Acres. So very much I am inclusive of it. I know there's folks who want to have it in there because then they can build into their, you know, put a third bathroom in or whatever they wanted to do into those things. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
But I think it's just a look. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
That's, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just looking at where you were down in Angus Acres. Thank you for that information. Lynda, did you want to address this?
Lynda Swerengen, again, first of all, we want you to know that the goal is to hook up anybody and everybody in Terrebonne. We just know through our analysis that in order to make it feasible, we had to pick an area to start with. And trust me, when it comes to people wanting to get in, that's, we want them in because the more volume we have, the cheaper it is for everybody. And so I would like to say, we did talk with several people from Angus Acres as well. And at the time, they said they were not interested in being in the first phase. And I will also say that as a district is formed and the Board of Directors are involved, if Angus Acres or some of these other areas come in and say, hey, we want to, we're ready to go, that boundary for those phases can change because the goal here is to get people hooked up. We're not trying to not hook the town up. We just know that it's only going to probably happen in phases. So.
So what is the, you know, we have these, these phases mapped out right now. What is the process for, you know, if, if there's a neighborhood that says, you know, you know, we have the critical mass of people to sign, you know, to sign, to, to join. Can they just, could they just do that at any time? You know, draw a little, draw a little boundary, go collect signatures, give them to, give those to you and, and join? Or do they have to?
They can ask to be annexed in. I mean, that technically is a legal question if, if our team wants to answer that. But Ryan, real quick, could you just show where you would hook Angus Acres up? I mean, we, we've given a lot of thought to how this is, can be hooked up because it, it is right on the line, the trunk line. So it can be hooked up.
I see the red, I see the red line running
Yeah.
Like a block. Yeah. Because I, I mean, if, if, if it's pretty easy for a, a small area to basically do a signature gathering process and then join in, then it, then it, then Mr. Bowen, it goes back to you to basically rally enough of your neighbors to, you know, to have the collective will to, to get in on Phase A versus being in Phase C.
Would we say that Phase A, B, and C are just names as in, they're not
Names, yeah.
They're not like A before B before C.
Exactly.
So it's just three names. Yep.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Marika Sitz, for the record, and I am an attorney at Jordan Ramis. My colleague Steve Schopsher and I have been working with this group since February. I just want to address the annexation question. So that process looks a bit like the formation process. But what you would see is the folks in the area that would like to be annexed would put together a petition and go through a process similar to this one. And ultimately, there would be a vote by those folks within the area to be annexed, whether or not they would like to be included. The Board of Directors of whatever the current boundary, whatever the current iteration of the district is, they would not be making that decision. It'd be the folks within the parcels to be annexed who would make that call. And then, of course, once, should that group vote to be included and the rest of the district be annexed, then those folks would have the ability to serve on the district board. They would be a part of the district.
So the, the existing board wouldn't have to bless or approve the, the annexation? It's just a question of a critical mass of, of signatures from within this new territory?
First, signatures and then votes, ultimately, in an election process.
Got it. But, but votes by the people in that, in that block. Great. Thank you.
So considering this is government, what if Angus Acres really wants to do this as soon as possible? How long might that take them? Do you have any kind of an estimate?
This process has, has taken a bit longer. Formation's not quite as common as annexation. I think the county does annex, has dealt with annexations more often. And so my presumption would be it'd be a bit more straightforward. I don't have a great estimate. It also depends on, I think, the desire of the folks on the ground who are willing to make a move, gather signatures, and get it done. So, you know, a couple months probably is, is optimistic, but it'll, it'll depend on a few factors.
Okay. Thank you, Marika.
If you've watched quite a few annexation processes
Yes.
Move forward, do you have any insights on kind of the timeframe, that, the minimum or maximum timeframes that something like this might take?
Yeah, I'm not sure with the election component, that would, that would be the issue that would, would address the timing on that. And so I'm not sure how quickly a special election could be held or if it would push to certain identified election dates already. The clerks was in the room. I don't know if he's still here, but he might be able to speak to, to that issue. But
So are we talking about putting this on the November ballot?
No, next May.
Apparently, no.
Okay.
Next May is what?
I believe May. It might be a March special election if it were to go in March. But
And, and, and Steve, can you do a spec, if you did a special election in March, can you just clip it to this geography as opposed to sending ballots and voter pamphlets and all that stuff out, out to the entire county?
Commissioner Steve Dennison, County Clerk. Yes, so my understanding is your vote on the November 2nd would determine whether this is going to go to an election or not for the formation. And any annexations after that would be in, in an election after that fact. I'm not sure if it could go on the same election, or an annexation could go on the same, on the same ballot as the formation. If that answers your question. And then, yeah, same thing, a question of timing and effective dates. I haven't seen specifically the annexation of a sanitary district, which is different than obviously any of the more common ones we see right now, fire and whatnot.
Thank you, Steve, for that.
We'll learn about this together.
Eric, I hear we have a couple of people on Zoom. Do you want to see if they're on Zoom to testify on this issue? Okay. Could we do that, please?
If you could ask them, ask the last couple of digits of the, the phone number and and
What is, yeah, what are the last digits? 1239? Yes, if you're on the call and you want to make testimony regarding this Terrebonne sewer system, could you please unmute yourself? What is it, star six or something? Yes, star six. So we can hear you. Okay. I see Angie.
Well, we're talking about setting a date for November 2nd for completion so that there'll be opportunity for input between now and then. I guess we'll confirm that. Will there be opportunity for input between now and the November 2nd date? You know, if somebody is following this, they hear about it today and they want to give us, get us an email or?
Yes, the, the record will be open until you begin your hearing on November 2nd. So, and certainly people could show up at that hearing as well and provide any testimony or information that they might deem
So there's plenty of opportunity for more information.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Dave. Okay. That person never identified themselves in? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else in the room then that, yes, go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Mike Walker. I live at 3711 Northwest Povey Avenue in Terrebonne. And I have, I joined the, the group in about December of '21 and began working with them. And I could quickly see that there were some issues or concerns that I had. And I raised those several times. And I kind of felt like they were dismissed or ignored. The main one being that I don't think anybody really put the effort into going out and talking to the community and getting a, a real feel for how many people supported this. So what I did is I went out and collected 150 signatures on a petition, which the form is a little rough, but the substance is certainly there. And these signatures were collected from people that are not in the red area on the map, or from anybody in Angus Acres who is on a community system, or anybody in Terrebonne Estates that's on a community system. So these are all residents outside of those areas. And there's overwhelming support for this system out there. I support it, but I do not support the way that they're doing it. Because what's going to happen that nobody has mentioned is, once they make the hookup in the red area, anybody septic who fails within 300 feet of that pipe is going to be forced to hook up and basically pay for that hookup themselves. So if a house, for example, is within the 300 feet, and you have to bring the pipe down the road to your house, you have to pay for the excavation, the engineering, and any other costs that are included in that, which in Terrebonne will be substantial because it's solid rock. So I've heard $100 a foot. I've talked to a couple of excavators who work out there regularly to put a sewer line in. I believe it has to be about five feet down. So you're going 300 feet at five feet down. They are kind of indicating that that cost will be somewhere around $300 a foot. For, you know, at 300 feet, that's about $120,000, which an individual would end up absorbing that cost. So when you hear people say, well, you know, if your septic system fails right now, you're going to have to pay $35,000 or so for an ATT system. With the way the formation is set up right now, you would end up paying $120,000 to get the pipe down to your house. And most of the people out there would never be able to absorb that cost. It's, it's a cost that's way out of line. If we would just include all of the areas in the initial infrastructure, then the district as a whole has the opportunity to go get grants or low-interest loans where individuals may not really have that opportunity. They're going to have to find, get the financing themselves or end up with liens on their property in order to hook up. There was also a letter that was generated by DEQ. It's not dated, in which there were $15 million from apparently the American Rescue Program. And that money was specifically marked for people to make connections from their house to the line. And it was money that could be used as grant money, if you qualify. that could be used as grant money, if you qualified for it. Apparently, nobody bothered to make much of an inquiry into that, or why we didn't have that money maybe set aside, or a portion of it set aside, so that we could use it at a later date. I think the residents out there have made it really clear that everybody supports it. Well, I shouldn't say everybody. Of the 150 signatures that I've collected, I've had four people tell me they're not interested in it. So what we would be asking is, rather than just doing the business community, and understanding that it would have to be done in phases still, but include the entire Hillman subdivision in the initial application process and formation, not exclude those other two areas, Phase B and C. That would be the the purpose in requesting the group to reevaluate the way they're looking at it, I guess, is what we would be looking at. In addition to that, as Commissioner Chang raised the issue with the EDUs, I have some real concerns about the way that those are being done. If you have, the way that the SDC charges are determined is you take the construction costs and you divide it by the number of EDUs. So if you do the area in the red, and you take the 160 and divide it into that, it makes the SDC charge about $18,000 per EDU. But what they've done in the economic feasibility statement is they still took the 1,054 EDUs for the entire Hillman subdivision, and they divided that back into the construction cost for only the business area. So it gets the SDC cost down to $6,300 EDU. And my concern is, this is exactly what the Terrebonne Water District did years ago. And then their their initial SDC charge was $2,200 a unit. They did a five-year review, and at the end of the fifth year, they realized they fell short because they didn't get the connections that they needed. So they hired an engineering firm, and they came back out and reevaluated it, and they upped the SDC charge just 250% in order to make up for that lost revenue from the lack of hookups that they got, even though they projected that they would get those hookups. They didn't happen. So they were short on money, considerably short on money. So they ended up having to raise them So again, as the residents out there, I would just ask that, I'm not I'm not opposing, and I don't think many people oppose the sewer connection. I think they're opposing the form that we're using to get it done. And a lot of these people are very concerned they're going to get stuck with a huge bill down the road, either with SDC charges that are shortfalls, or direct cost in in making the hookup as individuals rather than as a group.
Mr. Polvy, or sorry, Mr. Walker, I was, I was reading your your address. Mr. Walker, if there's a perception that the people who are early into the project are getting a better deal, could you, as we were discussing with Mr. Bowen, could you just, could you make the rounds in the Hillman subdivision and, you know, assess whether there's a critical mass of people who are ready to sign on and at this point, and then just annex in before, you know, before construction begins? I mean, it just seems like there's a, there is an on-ramp for for neighborhoods within within Terrebonne to get in on the project on the early end, despite the fact that they, you know, that, you know, these were the three bites that were laid out initially. It's not, it's not a barrier to to you getting your neighborhood into the into the project on the front end. And, you know, I'm, there's a, there's a lot of pieces of infrastructure that we need to talk about to, for me to understand better whether the people who are early in actually are getting a better deal than the people who are coming in later. But it seems like you have the opportunity through this annexation process to be one of the neighborhoods that's early in on the project. So I is, would that address your concerns?
My understanding is to annex in, you basically have to go through this process again. You would have to form a local improvement district. You'd have to hire engineering firm, law firm, probably. And and so to do the whole thing again doesn't really make sense when we can do it right now.
I, I, someone else would have to answer that for me. But I don't think you need to go through this whole process again. I think it's as easy as, it's, it sounds like it's as easy as just, you know, doing another petition, having, you know, a critical mass of landowners sign on, and then, and then putting it on the ballot with, I mean, you conceive, I don't know, conceivably, you might even be able to catch up with with this ballot, with this ballot item before it goes to the voters in the in the first place.
Okay. But again, why would we do that if we can just do it now and include everything?
Because all of the people in, you know, the, the people in Phase A, they had to gather a critical mass of signatures to qualify, to 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 form the district and get it on the ballot in the first place. So they would just be asking you to do the same thing in your neighborhood. It's not a, I don't, I don't see it as a different, you know, more more cumbersome process. In fact, you know, if if people have run the trap lines, it seems like it's an easier, an easier process for you to, to, you know, draft off of them or piggyback on on the process that's already moving forward. And, and, you know, we're getting into all sorts of super obscure, you know, legal procedure around a formation of districts and annexation and stuff like that. But if I'm following the discussion we've had so far today, it doesn't sound like it's a very hard thing to to bring this proposal around your neighborhood, gather the signatures, and then be part of essentially, you know, be, join Phase A.
I, I guess I would just differ with your opinion. I think it would be much easier to just bring us in right now, the whole Hillman subdivision as a whole, instead of isolating sections of the community.
But this, you know, this, I don't know if you, if you've had a chance to look at this, this document, but this long list of signatures that's in here, it's only from the Phase A area. So, I mean, you, you need signatures from your neighborhood for your neighborhood to be included in the district. You need signatures and you need a vote, whether it's kind of simultaneous with what's happening for Phase A, or whether it's a later stage.
Well, it's my understanding there's two ways to do this. You can either do it with a number of registered voters, or you can do it with just landmass. So if you have, I believe it's 15% of the total landmass, you don't even need a vote.
I think we, I think legal is at the desk. I'd like to hear what Dave has to say.
Sure. Well, Commissioners, I just want to clarify for you. The purpose of today's hearing is for you to either approve, modify, or reject the petition for formation. And the criteria is limited to, you may alter the boundaries set forth in the petition to either include or exclude territory that you believe would be benefited by creation of the district. This is not a county service district. So a lot of the issues associated with the equities of cost and all of that, that's for the new board that'll come into existence if and when this district is formed. It's really not in your wheelhouse to get in depth into that. It's just whether the, the, the territory is proposed would be benefited from this district. And you can, again, the statute says you either, you shall either approve, modify, or reject that petition. So you have the ability, if you wanted to modify the petition, to include territory that you believe would be benefited that is contiguous, you could do that. And then that would be part of what would potentially be formed as a district. Where it fits in with the phasing, that's for the board that would be elected. That's not for you. That's not in your wheelhouse today.
So to take it further, what you just said, Dave, we could actually say that areas A, B, and C are included? I mean, right now, we're looking at.
In the formation of the district?
Right.
Yes.
But is that what would appear on the ballot in March or May? I mean, are those called?
Well, assuming it goes to the ballot, it'll, it'll depend on people within the proposed district boundaries, whether there's enough people that request an election. If there's not an affirmative request for an election, then on November 2nd, you can issue an order that creates the district. So it kind of works in reverse to some. It's, the district will be formed on November 2nd by your board order, unless enough people meeting the 15%, the criteria there of 15% of the electors or 100 electors, whichever is lesser, registered in the proposed district, unless they file written requests for an election. So I hope that simplifies it a little bit here. But we seem to be going a little bit off-issue here, and those aren't issues that really are before you. Really, the only issue before you is whether or not to approve the formation of this district with the boundaries that have been presented to you, or whether to modify that. The boundaries, not how the payments are made and when they're made, and certainly not the phasing of how the system will be built out. That's going to be for the new formed district and their board to address.
Okay.
It's a very, I will say this, it's a very draconian process. There have been attempts, as long as I've been an attorney, to 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 fix ORS Chapter 198, which governs this. And every year, it fails. In the legislature, it doesn't go anywhere. It's a very confusing process, if that helps.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Okay. Yes, did you want, you haven't testified yet?
Hi there, Kristen Yurden.
Oh, Kristen, the letter.
Hello. 400 Northwest Smith Rock Way. And I just wanted to clarify on the DEQ financial funding that came available in the last year. We would like to pursue that money, but we can't pursue that money until we actually are a district. So the county could pursue it, and I think they were pursuing it. But at the point when we could have, anybody could have applied, the funding was determined to go to fire-affected properties that happened, that were affected in the last year. So that round closed. There is another round that will be taking applications. And we are looking at that, but we have to be a district before we can apply. So so we're not ignoring any of these things, because I think that's one of the most important things, is to provide funding to people who need to hook up on their, on their personal property, in addition to obviously funding for the entire project. But for the individual SDC charges and individual property work, we are looking at opportunities for that as well, just so you guys know that we're not ignoring that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And I think another thing that's an issue you have is the fact that they have the average income, I believe, of $56,000 or something for Terrebonne, which, you know, I went, did they put Phil Knight's income into that or something, or the ranch or something? Because, yeah, it, and it makes it, it makes it, you don't qualify for things because that income is so high. So, yeah. And Steve, did you want to add something else? And then, if there's other comments, realize that the record is open until November 2nd. And any and all emails would be appreciated.
Great, thank you.
I guess the last thing is, what your attorney, your county attorney said was you had the opportunity to modify, reject, or or approve this. I asked that you look at the modification of this. And I asked that you look at it in the fact that putting all three of the phases in into it as a, as a group, so we can look at the different things with the $15 million possible grants and that sort of stuff, to look at the whole infrastructure. I asked that you don't just approve it right off the bat here, but you actually modify it. That would be mine. And that way, we get, we'll have time for, I I've never met Mr. Walker, I believe it is. I've never met him before, but he has the same concerns that we do in Angus Acres and his, his part of the world. That would give us time to be able to go back, find out if there truly is a community need, let's say, of the 100 homes in Angus Acres, that, you know, you break down what the businesses, again, you break down what the businesses are worth to that, but you break down what 100 homes in Angus Acres, with, if it doesn't have a septic or a sewer system available, what you've just done to that economy with everybody moving out. Same thing with over in the Hillman District, I believe is what they call it. So I asked that you look at it as a modification to this, of looking at all three of the phases being put into a general lump on this. That'll give us time, as you were asking about the, Commissioner Chang, about the grassroots efforts, be able to go back and say, is there really truly a need? Are people going to do it? My next door neighbor is going through the Advantage System or whatever, and his system is having problems already. And he's dealing with, with the county and DEQ. That's where I found out we're in noncompliance, is he has a real concern. He goes, what do I do with my home if I can't have a septic system? And he gets condemned.
So you're saying today, your system is in noncompliance?
Not mine, next door neighbor.
Well, your next door neighbor, but with Angus Acres?
Yeah, he is, he's starting to go through that system. And that's where he found out DEQ was in noncompliance, just of that. So I asked that you look at this as a modification at this point, to be able to look and say, how do we put all three of them in there? And let us, give us a little bit of time to come back with you guys and be able to go from there. Thank you.
If I could just say, I, I mean, I think the idea of a modification is very interesting. You know, there's clearly people in Phase C or Phase B areas who are interested in joining, you know, getting in on the system early. If I followed Dave correctly, though, the risk is essentially, the more, the more residences we put in this modified proposal, the more people who are, have the opportunity to challenge the formation of the district, and then it would have to go to 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 the ballot. And the thing about the the existing area is that we know, because there's all these, all these signatures, that this, this idea has been shopped really hard in that, in that, in those neighborhoods. So I guess for me, to, I would, I wouldn't necessarily want to vote in favor of a modification expanding this until, you know, the neighborhoods that are asking to join have demonstrated that they've, they have a critical mass of interest and support. And I don't know exactly what that looks like, but, you know, but very open to, you know, very open to hearing that. But I would want to hear it from, you know, a critical mass of people in, in, in specific neighborhoods that they're interested, rather than casting a big broad net and trying to do a Phase A, B, and C all at the same time. Because I think that the more people we include that we haven't talked to, the more risk there is that someone's going to to challenge and slow the process down.
It's my understanding there's about 523 total homes out there. So if Mr. Parker collected 100 signatures in the area that's red, and I have 150 more in the area outside of the red, that's a substantial amount of signatures.
There's a number.
We have shown 344 lots in Phase B and 261 existing and future lots in Phase C. And that included Future 2.
But they're not all developed?
Right. Future and existing.
Right. I'm just talking about the houses currently, right now, though. It's my understanding there's about 523 residents. So if that's the case, and Mr. So if that's the case, and Mr. Parker got a petition with 100 signatures on it, and I have a petition with 150, that's 250 signatures or homes, basically, out of the 523, I would say that's, that's quite a bit of support.
Dave?
Yeah, I might just, in trying to answer Commissioner Chang's question, I'm not, legal's not privy to what their motivation might be to where the district, proposed district lines are being drawn. You can draw your own conclusions on that. I would suggest, though, if the board is inclined to potentially consider modifying the proposed district, that maybe you continue this hearing to another date. I, I don't really believe you have the wherewithal to, to attach properties based on what's been presented to you at this point. It'd probably be better for a discussion between the folks that are proposing to form the district and the folks today that are saying, hey, what about us? They may still come back with the exact same proposal to keep the district as it is, for perhaps the very reason that Commissioner Chang identified, I don't know. But it would seem a little ad hoc for the board today to, to be including additional areas in the proposed district boundaries, just based on what little information's been presented to you. These folks have spent a year or two, they've done the feasibility study, they've worked close with Chris Doty, so I suspect there may be some other reasoning why the, the formation is. But I just want to emphasize, your, your charge is relatively minor or small or narrow today, and that is either approve it, you, you either approve the boundary and let it go forward to November 2nd as it is, you, you, you don't approve that boundary, or you modify that boundary. And if you're going to consider modification of the boundary, again, I would suggest maybe a couple-week set over to have this hearing continued and come back in a couple weeks and revisit the issue, and maybe give these folks an opportunity to talk internally, and they can come back and report to you what, what their discussions have been.
And Dave, to extend the hearing, we would need a motion.
Need a motion to extend a hearing. If it's beyond four weeks, we'd have to renotice it. If it's less than four weeks, just your, your notice and vote on that today would be appropriate for notice purposes.
So do we have a, a date we're thinking of in?
Well, so then, I'd just like to acknowledge, so today's packet is the, the determined Phase A service area, and we're talking about if that change, that, that is in the purview of what's possible.
There is a proposed district boundary before you. You have every ability to accept that today and move this forward to November 2nd. If you do that, folks within that district boundary will have until November 2nd to file written objections, and if enough of those are filed, it would go to an election. Otherwise, on November 2nd, you folks would form the district. They would have an election, I believe, in March to get their, their Board of Directors, and then they'd be off and running.
Well, and yeah, just, so, and then we're hearing from other residents in the area that aren't included in Phase A, saying, hey, what about me? I mean, that's kind of the big picture here, correct?
Correct.
So I'm just making, you know, kind of grounding on what we're doing here.
Yeah, I think we're using terms, I mean, there's the district boundary, and, and that's what you folks are, are looking at, is what, what they're proposing to be the formation of the district boundary.
And I'm just, yeah, I'm referring to the, you know, when I say Phase A.
Just for clarification, when I refer to Hillman, that was what all of that Terrebonne area used to be referred to as.
Original plat.
Right, in 1909, I think.
And that's what I referred to at the very beginning. It's an urban unincorporated community. It was a platted spot of land. People have owned those smaller parcels this whole time, or, you know, whatever the ownership is. And that would get, that's what even gives us the opportunity to talk about searing, because mostly you don't do it in rural, so.
Right.
Okay, I believe we have a gentleman who's-
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Schopsher. At the risk of extending things too long here, I just wanted to make a brief comment. The, as, as Dave mentioned, the district formation statutes are arcane at best. And the question of an amendment of the proposed service area is covered under 198805. And basically, it says that at the time of this hearing, the board has the option to consider whether the boundary is appropriate based on criteria prescribed in a different statute, as to whether that property could be benefited. And that statute frankly is, it's 199462 is the statute that you look to in terms of what your criteria are. And it's not particularly helpful. It's somewhat vague, and it, it talks about things like comp, the local comp plan for the area, economic, demographic, and sociological trends, projections pertinent to the proposal. So it's not a specific set of checklist type of items, but it is, to, to County Council's pro, or, comment, a continuance would be, I think, appropriate if you were going to consider a modification, because there are many factors that have to be considered. And frankly, I think the, the Sewer Advisory Committee, as Ms. Schwerinchen pointed out, would be thrilled to have as many connections come on board as possible. But the, the petition that's been filed follows the statutory requirements, which includes a detailed economic feasibility study. And that includes a certain infrastructure existing within a certain area of the proposed district boundaries. And if a change of those boundaries was required or suggested, then an additional economic feasibility round is probably something that would be required, which would include additional time, expense, and effort to get to that point. An annexation by contrast is by petition, or the district board, actually, of its own accord to propose an annexation of area. But that ultimately goes to an election that is put to the voters of the territory that is slated for potential annexation. And so at that time, that's where you think about the economic feasibility going forward of those extensions and such. So it's, there's a little chicken and egg here, because this is a community system that this group has worked very hard to try to figure out what's the best first step. And it's, the, the economics of the matter, as you've seen in the economic feasibility study or such, that you've got to hit certain statutory requirements in order to be able to form a district like this. And then there's the whole practical side of economic feasibility and service feasibility. And so there, there are a lot of moving parts, granted, but I think the, the question before you really is yes, no, or amend. And if it's amend, then I think some additional time is probably required in order to go back and look at these statutory factors. I hope that's helpful. I didn't mean to confuse things.
No.
It's the framework that we live within.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for stepping up. And Chris, I was wondering if we were going to-
And I would assert that we're at a yes or amend phase, because, I mean, everybody's saying yes, and that's what we've seen. So I don't know that there's three choices.
We cannot stop this from happening, so we just-
Yeah, so I just, and apologize for jumping up. I just wanted to provide some kind of behind-the-curtain discussion or just awareness of the strategy of why there's a Phase A, B, and C. And sensing some anxiety of, of the folks here in the room, and wanting to kind of get this out there today, we might as well just talk about it while we're talking about it. So with, with Phase A, there's near unanimous support, near unanimous desire to hook up to it in the near term. That's what makes it pencil. With Phase B and C, you know, the thought would be that those areas also get the infrastructure, but, you know, is there the willingness to hook up in the near term? And, you know, there, there's desire for sewer, certainly, because people sense that, but are they willing to, to pay the SDC and then incur a $60, $70, $80 sewer bill immediately? And it was, it was the strategy of, you know, people will ultimately have to answer that for themselves, as to whether or not they'd be supportive of, you know, bringing in B or C. But, you know, with near unanimous support, this thing moves forward on November 2nd as Phase A, and, and starts to, to gain momentum, further momentum. Bringing B and C onboard, you know, people will, will certainly, you know, have to ask themselves, are they willing to be as committed as the folks in Phase A are to connecting when they have not near the problems that, that you see in the commercial areas? Phase B is, is older Terrebonne, smaller lots, drill holes. Certainly, that's why they're B, because they're, they're right on the cusp and, and ready. But there's a lot of folks in there that, that, you know, may be supportive, but wouldn't want to pay, you know, that sewer bill today. Phase C, on the other hand, you know, larger lots, more reserve area, and so that was the strategy. Really, it was, you know, where can we get the, the most unanimous support early to get this thing going and not risk it being called up for an election and have, have it go down and lose all momentum? Get it coming in Phase A, make it wide open, design the, the infrastructure to accommodate full buildout of Terrebonne, there's no upsizing of the line necessary to get out to the Redmond Treatment Plant. You know, certainly, there's the perception that A's getting the good deal here, but the reality is, you know, without Phase A stepping up, this thing could die on the vine, just like it did in 1984, just like it did in 1999. And, and then what can the community do? And so I just wanted to get that out there for the board, and your consideration of, of maybe moving the boundary, is that, that's the risk that's coming in here. It, it could potentially, you know, go away via vote, because, you know, folks don't want to necessarily hook up and pay that right now, even though they may be supportive of it. You know, you're basically voting a pretty substantial utility bill on yourself and hookup fee.
So Chris, tell me then, we're looking at Phase A, but you're telling me then that they're going to build the line, the permanent lines are going to go underneath to those other A, B, and C? Are they going to, is that going to be part of what's happening in A?
No, in A, the, the, A will be connected to the Redmond Wetlands Complex.
Right, yes.
But that line will be designed with capacity to serve the entirety of, of buildout of Terrebonne. And so B, you know, can hook into the system without having to add capacity anywhere else in the system. They'll just hook into the, the piping that's designed within A and extend it further into B.
And then, when we look at this map, there's these red lines running, you know, up into the, you know, southwest corner of Terrebonne, and then coming into the, into the Phase A area. Those red lines are the mains that will be constructed as part of Phase A.
That's correct.
So there is like a red line that's like almost a third up in the Phase B?
Correct, yes.
So that one will be actually pretty darn, it'll be closer?
Yeah, that's where B will connect, you know, into, and, and into the various neighborhoods. It could happen en masse, it could happen in onesies and twosies, you know, and, and, you know, incrementally extend through, through an annexation process as well.
If I could just say, I, I, if I could just say, there, there's a real need to have a district formed as soon as possible to access the grant and loan funding that is available, the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure bill that was just passed by Congress. That is a massive influx of funding, and it will not be around forever. So we really need this district to be in place and functioning, to be able to secure some of that. It's, in the room today, there are, you know, we have a whole bunch of champions of the sewer system. And there, I think there's a perception that we're competing with each other, but I, I really hope that we can come out of the room, go have some community discussions, and figure out how best to move the district forward, to get the district formed as fast as possible so that you can start securing some of those grant and loan funds to serve everyone, the Phases A, B, and C. And I, I guess I would like to kind of, you know, end the discussion pretty soon on that point, you know, that, that there's, there's homework that needs to be done at the community level.
How do we, how do we come up with a project like this in a community where the strategy is to exclude the residents? How do we do that?
My, my impression is that there was, there was a core group of people who I was, who was ready to, to step forward early, and-
I had suggested numerous times that we have, because I was in this group, okay, that we have more meetings, or we send out survey cards, or we take a little more time to go to the community, so we could include them initially. Those were dismissed. So we are where we are because the strategy, apparently, that was taken was to just exclude all of the residents. And I'm asking myself, how do you do a project like this and exclude the residents?
Well, we have, we have two options at this point, to, to get parts of Phase B and Phase, Phase C in the project sooner. We can either hold this hearing open and explore modification. I'm open to doing that for a, a finite period of time, you know, because it's a, it's an important question and, and an important option. But I, I don't want to hold it open for too long and, and risk the, the district that, you know, the bird that we have in hand. Or we can allow this district, you know, as, as mapped, to move forward, and we can, and, you know, it sounds like the, the annex process, the on-ramp, is not that difficult and can be done later. So I, I, I think the resolution of this question is best done at the community level among all of the champions of a sewer system in Terrebonne. And I, we're, this is not necessarily something that the, the Board of Commissioners is suited to do, is to, to negotiate a, you know, negotiate a collective decision for the people of Terrebonne. That is best done by the people of Terrebonne.
But those are the people we've excluded.
There are, like I said, there are these two, two options, the modification or the annexation later on. We are holding, I, I would propose that we hold both of those options open for the moment, and let you, let you all go home and do some homework together.
Did you want to say anything, Lynda?
Yes. I, I think we can do both things simultaneously. I think the most important thing today is to get this, the district formed, and simultaneously work with those property owners that want to be included. And, you know, one of the things that we did is, we had almost 100% unanimity within that district. And so as we phase this out, we want to have the same thing as we expand these districts, so that people want to come in, they're not going to be opposed when they get an SDC bill, we want them to hook up, because that's the goal. And so what I would propose is that you move forward on this, and then allow us to work with the areas that want to move in, but that, what that's going to mean is those people are going to have to sign their name, saying they want to come into the district. Now, fortunately, there's enough time to be included and, and to have some synergy within the construction process, so you don't miss anything by annexing in. But I can, I can just tell you, from being involved in lots of sewer projects, when people have to sign their name on their property, saying that they're willing to, to hook up, to, to pay an SDC charge, and they're not going to complain, well, they can go, they'll always complain about what their monthly bill is, but we want to make sure this succeeds. So, you know, we'd certainly be willing to look at Angus Acres, see how many people want to sign up for that, to come into the district, and, and in your area as well.
I would just say that I think once the formation's done, the deal is basically done.
Okay.
Sounds like they'll, we're shedding light on the opportunity here, so this is what I'm seeing. And then, yeah, I mean, if there's people that are interested in being involved, being involved upfront may be value, you know, because of the, you know, the shovels being turned in the near future. Yeah, so I'm just seeing it that there's opportunities coming by doing anything here.
Well, I would, I would agree that, you know, keeping it open at this point is probably the best thing to do, and see if we can figure out some way to include it. And I understand what they're saying about when it comes time to actually pay the bill, some people don't pull through, which again, takes me back to the DEQ money that's sitting there, which would be, in an area like Terrebonne, would be crucial to getting a lot of people connected.
Which we can't get until we have a district.
Right, we've got to have the district.
I understand the, I understand the circle.
We're on a, it's a chicken and an egg, and we've got, we've got to move forward, because we do have the ARPA funding, those, those projects are supposed to be done by '26. So, Chris Doty, is there anything else you want to say?
No, just that, that, you know, I understand the fear and, and the perception, but that's not the case. System's designed to be expanded, that's the beauty of the Step System, the expandability of it. The entire design of what needs to be there to serve the entire build-out of the community is there. Mr. Walker owns developable property in the northwest part of, of Terrebonne. That trunk line that comes down C Avenue will be there- That trunk line that comes down C Avenue will be there for him to hook a future subdivision into if he so chooses through an annexation process. So that, you know, the strategy again is give it to the people that need it, want it first, can make it happen, have it be there for the people who need it in the future, who, you know, could potentially trip it up if we're not careful enough in how we draw the boundary.
Well, so now, now I'm kind of deliberating towards where we're going to go here today. So remember, I mean, there's been checks written, this is support, full support by your Board of Commissioners. If stars are aligning, let's make sure we're ready to proceed. I heard about this years ago, and we all sat in this room, I think it was the budget session a couple of years, three or four years ago, and, yeah, four years ago. And I was nodding yes at that point in time, and it took us this long to get here. So, I mean, I'm going to be leaning into this. If we, you know, postpone a decision today, that's just in light of the community conversation because it's getting close and it's getting real, but I'm going to be supportive in the end here. So then, as I say, I'm not real clear on if there would be a slight modification to this footprint or not.
Well, I remember how hard I had
This is deliberations for my commissioners.
I had to work on with Tom Anderson, talking me into doing the third study, and I do not want to stop this project. I know the community really needs it, and I can understand the perception, you know, but we've got to get as much grant funding as we can. It's, you know, we've got to go ahead in order to really, the need is now. So Commissioner Chang, do we need a motion or something?
I'm trying to decide whether
You were close, right?
Whether I want to move to keep it open for four weeks or whether to move the, move it forward right now.
Well, I think a, you know, if we didn't do action today, it'd be a week or two.
Right.
Just look for a close date, just for this conversation to mature a little bit.
On the modification.
Right.
Yeah, the ask that's out there. And if the ask isn't responded to, it's knowing that it's out there, we've already learned that today.
Well, two weeks is on the 19th of October.
If we
Dave?
Yep, please.
If I could, could I just clarify one point? I think there's a little bit of confusion on the subsequent annexation. So if the, if the boundary is approved and the district is formed with the boundary, if there is an area that wishes to annex in, if there's 100% support from the property owners in that area, there's no need for an election, they simply come in. You handle those all the time with fire district annexations, it's very similar to that. It's only if there isn't 100% support that those subsequent annexations would require a vote. So again, if you cut off, you know, surgical pieces outside of the initial district that want to annex in, and they know ahead of time they have 100% agreement, they're going to come in automatically, it's a formality at that point. It's where there's some opposition, then it would have to go to an election.
And when we have a single property annexation, that's by default?
100%.
100%, and we see that in fire districts all the time.
Correct. So, so I think, I think the impression was that all subsequent annexations into the districts would automatically require an election, and that's not the case.
So then if we had annexations approved in the near future, they'd be part of the initial investment and the distribution of grant dollars would be fair and equitable for the dollars that are on the table today. Yeah, I'm deducing that, so.
I could imagine that the annexation terms are going to be different if you're way out, way, way, way out on the edge, pretty far from where the original mains were envisioned for Phase A versus right on the edge, though. I mean
Yeah, it would certainly not pencil if you had to extend it 300 feet for one septic tank. Development property, a certain distance away where you can share that, you know, spread that cost around a variety of different lots, probably would pencil. And it would be there, and it could be annexed, like Dave just mentioned, without a vote, because it's a single lot ownership.
So I'm leaning towards passing this today. I'm just, yeah.
I would support that.
There you go.
So does someone
So in support of setting a hearing date, I'll move approval of Order Number 2022-051, accepting the petition to form the Terrebonne sanitary district and setting final hearing.
On November 2nd? Do we need that dated?
November 2nd.
Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd say great discussion today. I mean, thank you everybody for being here and doing this. Interesting how we've learned a lot.
I mean, I would, I would just say, I'm, while it wasn't in the staff report, because I don't, I don't think anyone knew that it was supposed to, that it was a really important piece of the discussion today, I'm really glad that we fully unpacked the pathway for annexation and that people are hopefully a little clearer now on how that, how that works.
Okay, Commissioner Devone?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair, both yes.
And we're available for input on this topic for the next few weeks. I mean, this is a wide open issue at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating and getting more information to us. So it is now 10 to 11.
10 to 12.
We have another public, 10 to 12, we have another public hearing?
So Madam Chair, I'd just like a moment to acknowledge Commissioner Scar from Telemont County has joined us in the room. We got to spend time with her in Pendleton recently, we crossed paths there. So, you know, she mentioned she was going to be in town at 11:30 today, and I said, well, come on by, we might be finishing our meeting about that time.
We, we thought we were going to be, but
Didn't quite happen.
Commissioner Scar, there's an item, there's an item, two items down our agenda about behavioral health funding, basically partnership with the City of Bend, which you might find interesting, particularly interesting. Not that, not that everything that you've heard so far is
Oh, it's good.
Totally fascinating.
Okay, we have item number seven with a public hearing. Cody Smith?
I'm here, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Cody.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer, Deschutes County Road Department. Hopefully, hopefully everyone finds my little item here interesting.
I don't know, it's the road I drive on every day, Cody, so
Well, and yes.
We're not sure of it.
As soon as we started this item, everybody left the room.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, my presentation.
Oh, I don't know if we're going to continue on with the meeting today past noon, I have a commitment for LOC that I have to leave for.
Do you want to reconvene this afternoon, you're thinking?
No, because it's, that's from 1:00 to 2:30, so.
Oh, so you say you have till 1 o'clock?
No, I, I have to be there before 1:00 for my LOC presentation panel.
And driving.
Well, it's here, at the River House, yeah. So I didn't know if you guys
Well, I'm flexible, let's power through.
Our drop date is 12:30, 12:40?
No, no, it takes more than four minutes to get there. I'm supposed to be there before, am I supposed to be there like at 22:01? So I need to be done at like 11:15, 12:15, I would say.
We might be able to proceed without
Okay, let's go, Cody.
Yeah, we'll see.
So Cody, pressure's on.
Okay, so this morning, we're holding a public hearing regarding proposed vacation for a portion of unused right-of-way for Fryer Road. Quick agenda here, I'm going to provide some background information, present the road department's findings and recommendation. We will then ask the board chair to open the public hearing, and after the public hearing, ask the board to consider Order Number 2022-042. So background information, Oregon Revised Statutes 368, 326 to 366 provide procedure for counties to vacate public roads, public property, or other public interest that falls under their jurisdiction. The road department has received a petition for the vacation of an unused portion of right-of-way for Fryer Road that was established in 1921. The subject right-of-way abuts BLM-managed federal lands, because the petition was not signed by the BLM, which would have given us 100% of a budding property owner's signatures, public hearing is required under state law. So here, here's a map of the proposed area, you can see there to the west, hatched in that striped hatching is the proposed vacation area, where no public improvements exist. To the east of that is the as-constructed alignment of Fryer Road, which exists within an established right-of-way. That right-of-way was given to us by the BLM under a BLM right-of-way grant. The petitioners in this matter are, is Eric Vedderline, general partner on behalf of Desert Springs Ranch Limited Partnership, who are the owners of Tax Lots 2800 and 2801, the two parcels that that right-of-way crosses over. Once again, the United States, or the BLM on the behalf of the United States are the owners of Tax Lot 2401, which abuts this right-of-way, and they did not sign the petition. Notice of the petition in this public hearing was mailed out to adjoining property owners and affected utilities and agencies. No comments in response to that have been received by the road department to date. So based on all that, our findings, the subject right-of-way was established by Deschutes County with order, by order in 1921, meeting the requirements of ORS 368.326. The proposed vacation will not deprive access to any owners of a recorded property right, meeting the requirement of ORS 368.331. The petitioners who represent the owners of more than 60% of the property abutting the subject right-of-way have submitted a complete petition and submitted the required fee, that meets the requirements of 368, 341-1C, 341-3, 341-4, and 351. So based on the findings just given, the road department has determined that the proposed vacation is in the public interest. The road department recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the vacation of this unused portion of right-of-way for Fryer Road by adopting Order Number 2022-042, subject to the following conditions, one, that no opposition to the vacation is reported to the county prior to the order presentation, which we have not received one, or during the required public hearing, which we will hold here in just a second, and that the vacated property will vest with the rightful owner or owners holding title according to law in accordance with ORS 368, 336-1C. At this time, I request that the board chair open the public hearing, and after public testimony has been given this morning, and subject to any testimony disputing the matter, I request that the board chair close the public hearing and that the board consider adoption of Order Number 2022-042. And last item here, for those of, those of you wishing to testify via Zoom, I believe we do have some folks attending via Zoom that want to testify, you can use the raise hand feature located at the bottom of the Zoom application window to be promoted to a panelist. And with that, I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Cody. I will now open the public hearing. Do we have anyone in the room regarding item four Fryer Road that wants to testify? Okay, Eric, is there anyone on Zoom that has a raised hand? Okay, and phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
All right, thank you so much, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I'm a, I'm a partner of the ranch that's owned by, it's a family ranch that we've owned for 50 years or more along Fryer Road there, and we just, you know, realized that we had this old right-of-way that was designated, that we wanted to restore to our ownership since the actual built road is improved off of our property onto the BLM. So originally, the built section of Fryer Road meandered further west through kind of the middle of those two lots, and my father in the 1980s worked with the county road department to locate it off our property on the BLM. So I'm not quite sure where the 1921 right-of-way came from, but anyway, it hasn't been used as far as I know. So we're just asking for your approval of that vacation request.
Thank you for that testimony, so you are in support of, so.
I am absolutely in support of it, yes.
Yes, good, good to know. I'm thinking like, okay, let's hope it's not someone that's opposing, or we'll, it'll add a whole new element to our, our morning. All right, is there anyone else, Eric, to, with a raised hand? That is the only testimony then that we have at this moment? Okay, so we will, we will close the public hearing at this time. I believe, are we, are we allowed to debate where we're at?
So one question I have, this is for Cody, is there any, anything about the non-response from BLM for the petition, as in, is that interesting, or it's just kind of expected that they don't really have an opinion on that, or any thoughts?
I, I don't think it's necessarily interesting. I, I didn't anticipate they would be providing any comments.
Yeah, I'm just assuming it's possibly just not a priority. It's not even on the BLM, it's just next to it.
I had spoken to the, to the partnership's legal counsel prior to all this, when they were contemplating submitting this petition, that, you know, they could certainly try to seek a petition signature from the BLM, but I've never seen the BLM actually be a party to any of these. So I, my, my expectation is the BLM was just going to remain silent in this whole matter.
And so that's what we, yeah, it's just remaining silent. Okay, thank you.
I had, I guess I had a small concern, or interest I wanted to share on this issue. So the county does own quite a lot of pieces of currently unused right-of-way like this. In cases like this, when, when that chunk of right-of-way is right along a road that has substantial recreational use, one of the things I'm curious about is whether if we retained this right-of-way or probably like a piece of this right-of-way, and particularly not the part that squiggles way out, away from Fryer Road, whether that, we currently have rights to do things like develop just a little wayside or a resting stop for people who are using, you know, recreationally using Fryer Road. If, if we are allowed to do that, I would be interested in exploring that, you know, kind of carving out a small piece of, of this right-of-way to retain. And then in other cases, I, in other cases, I could imagine, there is increasing demand for, in our community for paved paths in county road corridors that are separated from the road, and having pieces of right-of-way like this, this is not, this is not very long, so it, you know, it doesn't really get us to the goal of having a, you know, a recreational corridor to offer to people. But if in the future, we're looking at proposals like this that have, you know, a chunk of county right-of-way in addition to, you know, the standard right-of-way that exists along, you know, every county road, I, I would like us to look at those pieces with an idea to support, you know, to support the recreational use of county roads in the future. So the, sorry, to go back to the question, Cody, does, does having this right-of-way give the county the right to, you know, develop like a small, you know, some small piece of recreational infrastructure, something like a little wayside resting stop?
The wayside resting stop question, I'm not really prepared to answer that question. Dave Doyle, if he's still in the room, might be, but, but in terms of whether or not that would, you know, meet the, a development like that or an improvement like that would really meet the intent of the establishment of a public road right-of-way, we haven't, I haven't contemplated that, that hasn't been, that question's never really been asked of me. In terms of, you know, the multi-use path question, I mean, that's, that's certainly something that can be accommodated within a public right-of-way and, you know, for the most part, our, with our existing 60-foot right-of-way and our 60-foot right-of-way standard, that's something that would, you know, in general, could be accommodated within a 60-foot right-of-way. So I, you know, vacation of this, the right-of-way that's, that's being proposed right now certainly doesn't preclude or prevent us from, you know, if in the future, and then that, and that's, that's part of a much bigger conversation that we'd need to have, that I'm also certainly not prepared for today in regards to, you know, the development of multi-use path and trails along the county road network. But this, this vacation certainly wouldn't preclude that in the instance of Fryer Road.
So, so from the edge of the road, with our 60-foot right-of-way, how much room do you have on one side or the other at this, at this moment?
Well, the improved, the improved Well, the improved, the improved width of right of, of Fryer Road, rather, varies between 22 feet and I, I think maybe we have 26 feet in some cases. So you have, you have anywhere from, you know, 14 to 18 feet either side of the road additional outside of the existing improved roadway prism.
That's, that's great to know. Thank you. Dave, did you want to comment?
I certainly think if we're, also, you know, if we're talking about recreation, here where our right of way for the, the current alignment goes across B L M, that we would consider constructing those on the B L M side of the road, not on the, not on the private property side of the road.
Sorry, if I could just add to Cody's answer, as far as right of way, I believe what you're proposing would be outside the scope of that, because normally it should be dedicated to roadway purposes.
Typically, our dedications of right of way, so keep in mind, I mean, it's private property that other people own, the county just has the ability to, to use it for roadway purposes, and so it's a dedication, but the underlying fee title is with the, is with the adjacent property owner. So typically, right of ways are dedicated for roadway purposes, and that would include, obviously, the traveled roadway and the various supports. And Chris and Cody could talk about the toe of the road and the foot of the road, and then we typically like to have a clear zone as well outside of that, where if a car goes off the roadway, it's not going to encounter something that could cause a problem, pillars, big rocks, things, signage, things of that nature. So to use it for something akin to a recreational purpose or a wayside rest area or whatnot, could get some pushback from the underlying fee owner that that's not within the scope of the right of way that you were granted, you're expanding the scope, you need to buy that from me. And that's certainly always an option, is, if you're going to develop something like that along some county right of way, that you could always purchase the underlying fee for that type of a facility. Again, that's not to say you can't, you know, there's some arguments that parking improvements are part of, are associated closely enough with the roadway itself, that, that that would be appropriate within the right of way. So it's just a matter of how comfortable you are, sort of pushing that envelope and expanding the purpose beyond, you know, what's a very specific support of the roadway surface, and.
In a setting like this, where the B L M land is on the, on the other side of the road, it, it would probably be easier to work with the B L M.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, after a little discussion there, I'll move approval of Order Number 2022-042, vacating a portion of Fryer Road.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Okay, we next have item number eight. That's, I believe, Janice, thank you, and Holly, thank you so much.
Our health administrator, Janice Gerson.
Yes, here she is.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for having us. I'm Holly Harris, Program Manager for Behavioral Health Crisis Services.
I'm Janice Gerson, Director of Health Services. I'm letting Holly take this one.
So we're here today to request Board approval and Chair signature of Document 2022-470, our intergovernmental agreement with the city of Bend. So as you all are very well aware and have been informed on this process, we've been working with the city to secure some additional funding to help expand upon our mobile crisis team, to allow for non-law enforcement response to certain call types. So this, these funds that are given to us from the city of Bend are one-time ARPA dollars that would be good through August of 2024, and what it will allow for, and it's in the I G A for you to sign, is it will allow for one position that will be added to the mobile crisis team, and we are going to plan to add this position to our night shift, and then it also helps contribute to the supervision of that staff person, as well as some contribution to the stabilization center, because as we know, we can respond to crises all day long, but without other resources to connect them to, it's not as effective. And then it also helps pay for some of the indirect costs associated with that position. This will be part of a larger bucket of money that the Oregon Health Authority will be giving us some dollars to add a position, several positions that will be coming. So this will ultimately help us get to the 24/7 ability to respond without law enforcement to certain calls that are safe to do so.
Wonderful. And I, what is it, yesterday, I think you said we had over 2,300 unique individuals that have been served by the stabilization center since it began, so, yes. Thank you for those numbers.
Thank you.
I, I want to express my thanks to the city of Bend for their willingness to contribute to crisis services at, at county behavioral health. We originally made this request, our original request to them was to help us support the stabilization center. We have been very fortunate to receive another round of impacts grant funding, which alleviates the need for stabilization center funding for the moment, but, you know, anytime we have a really critical, yeah, critical, essential, fundamental service like this, we don't want to be dependent on competitive grant funding to keep it operating. So I, I let, I let our colleagues on the Bend City Council know that I, I very much appreciated their, their contribution to crisis services, but I also would probably be back asking about stabilization center funding in the future as well.
Thank you for your advocacy, Commissioner. We appreciate it.
Well, it's great to know we have this, you know, this stabilization center, you know, it's, it's a point of pride now, and it's known around the state, and, and, yeah, you've said people around the country even call and say, how did you do that? What does it look like? And congratulations. So it's really exciting, great partnership with the city of Bend to keep it funded, and this is the way it goes in the Health Department. And do we have money for this? Do we have money for that? We're just always going to keep moving it forward. So this is some resources to keep it rolling.
And I mean, we, we, we've made a number of comments about the, the stabilization center, but I, you know, I also just want everyone to be, you know, anyone who's watching out there to be aware that this is a really exciting expansion of our mobile crisis assessment team, being, we will be able to respond to more and more appropriate calls that are coming into 911 with behavioral health specialists, you know, independent of law enforcement response, and that is going to provide better outcomes for neighborhoods where disruptions are occurring, for people who are having crises, and, you know, for, for the system overall, so.
And just so you're aware, we have already hired one staff to add to this program through some Oregon Health Authority dollars, and we have already begun to dip our toe into the water of responding without law enforcement. I think we've done three or four of those calls already before the program's even fully developed, because there are just some really, really obvious ones that we can respond to now. So it's, it's working well so far.
Good.
And how is the, is the hiring process for these type of positions easier or harder than other kinds of positions?
Yes, so these are going to be peer support specialists and case managers, so we generally do not have near the trouble hiring those positions as we do other positions. So we fully expect to be able to get a large pool of applicants that we can choose from.
Excellent. So for those calls with, not, without public safety, I'd be interested in, you know, like the generic paragraph of what those scenarios are, just because I, I don't have a good talking point for, oh, when this happens, this happens. I, you know, I, I have most things kind of figured out with my experience, but I just don't have a feel for that.
Well, I can give you one real quick.
Sure, yeah, exactly.
Assisted living facilities. So they tend to call 911 when there's a resident in a facility there that's dysregulated due to mental health concerns. Law enforcement doesn't need to respond to an assisted living facility, so that's an easy one where we can go and respond with, with our team and, and manage that situation much more, you know, reasonably than having a law enforcement officer show up with a, you know, weapon.
See, I did.
One small example. There's many, many more, and I'll be happy to.
Yeah, so just as time goes on, you know, maybe just the, the scenarios as they come up.
Sure.
I would, I would also hope that the local public safety coordinating council is, is tracking, is tracking the, the growth and development of the mobile crisis assessment team as well. So I don't know when the last time.
Yeah, and that'd be a place to update.
You made a, you made a presentation to them, but.
Been a while.
It seems like that would be a great thing to.
I have not been a part of that in a while, so I'd be happy to present before Lipstick, and, and we're also going to be tracking an enormous amount of data related to this project, some of it by our own choice and some of it not, related to the Oregon Health Authority requirements with the dollars. So there will be lots of data to demonstrate who we're serving, who we're serving with law enforcement, who we're serving without law enforcement, what the scenarios are, the response times, all of that, and I'm happy to share all of that.
Thank you for all the data you shared with me yesterday. I think it was 4.5 hour, minutes that law enforcement drops off, and what is it, about 62% of the people you see at the stabilization center are from Bend?
Yes.
So, and what, 3% are from Creek County?
Yes.
So, yeah, it's, you know.
You know the stats as well as I do now.
I know, I'm like, okay, no, that, you know.
The numbers person.
Well, we went up from 2,200 to over 2,300 unique persons in the, the program, so that's really good to know. Thank you, thank you, Holly, for all that you do. So do we have a motion then?
I move approval of Chair's signature of Document Number 2022-470, a city of Bend grant agreement.
And I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Commissioners, thank you, and I would like to just very briefly note, because I'm not sure the news has circulated, that Holly will be acting as Behavioral Health Director until we recruit the position fully. So she is now your go-to for all things behavioral health. I have officially passed the torch temporarily, and that was formalized, I think, on the first of October. So, thanks, Holly.
We'll have to get her a new hat.
You're not busy enough, Holly.
Or a crown.
You're not busy enough. And, and I just wanted to, I don't think we've, we have officially recognized Janice at a Board of Commissioners meeting as our incoming Health Services Director, and want to thank you for stepping up to that role, that critically important role for the county.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you so much.
Now you get to focus on restaurant inspections, food trucks, water systems, and.
Don't forget swimming pools.
There you go.
Yeah, we have great teams in public health.
For my notes from Administrator LeLac, the open house briefing, debriefing can be put off till next week, and there's just one grant acceptance, but I'm actually, I'm going to step out now because I don't need to drive too fast over to that.
Okay.
So somebody gets to take over for me. Thank you so much.
Nice chair.
Nice to see you, Hawkins.
Oh, yes, sorry we didn't get to spend time together, but thanks for joining us. Yes, that way you go. Now you've seen it, yep. Okay, so it's the vice chair. I say we at least stand up for 60 seconds. Ah, it's been three hours, but we'll finish the meeting in, yeah, just like two minutes.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
We need to, yeah, we've got to give you.
Just two minutes to stand up. Yeah, so this is, okay, we're back to our board meeting. Item number 10, consideration of Oregon Business Development Grant acceptance. Jeff Heinz, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner DeBonne, back before you today to request consideration and approval of a business development department grant that was created as part of the 2019, 2021 legislative session, which identified $10 million in tax lottery funding to business Oregon to provide grants for improvements, capital improvement projects across fairs, across the state of Oregon. The first round of projects was slated for this year, and Fair and Expo contributed a project for consideration and ultimately was granted the opportunity for funding for a project in the amount of $277,777. The motion would be two-part, one, to move approval of Document Number 2022-787 for acceptance of the Oregon Business Development Department Grant, and secondarily, approval of Board signature on Order 2022-57, which would allow me to be the signing authority on the grant as it was submitted with my name on it without being provided to, or with information to the Commissioners before, due to my.
Signing authority.
Yeah, yeah, and my lack of providing that, which I apologize for in advance and now better understand the grant policies on Deschutes County. So this is a project that would be part of a larger, funding of a larger project that was pre-budgeted. It's the H V A C controls system at Fair and Expo, which have failed. It's a project that's been budgeted multiple times in the past, but was budgeted to be fully funded as part of our fiscal '23 budget cycle, but this would provide offset of those funds and would be utilized in combination with Energy Trust of Oregon funds, which would actually provide this complete project, which was put off because of lack of funding for multiple years at up to zero cost to, to Deschutes County. Stop there and open up for any questions.
We're going to have air conditioning in the event center, is that what this is?
No, unfortunately, this, this will not do that. This would allow us to, or this will allow us to regain control of the H V A. us to regain control of the HVAC system.
In all the other buildings.
In all of the other buildings in which it currently exists, and provide efficiency updates, VFD, variable fan drives in each of those buildings. And it actually will allow us to expand the scope of the original project to include the event center for controlling the heating system and the ventilation system. Unfortunately, it will not allow us to add, yeah, air conditioning at this time.
And this will be the next generation of hardware, too, so that'll be nice, I'm sure.
Yeah, and this will be next generation hardware. It provides for a lot of opportunities for expansion in the future. So if we were to add air conditioning into that building or other controlled items, including lighting, the system, the Distech controller that is part of the larger package that's gone out for RFP that would be ringing back for final contract shortly, would be able to do that as well.
Great. Well, good to see the dollars flowing and getting a fair share for a great facility.
I'm sorry, I ran down the hall this morning without grabbing things out of my box. So if this staff report was in the box, I tried to jot down the numbers of the documents, but I'm not prepared to make a motion without somebody feeding me some numbers. Okay.
So it's, yeah, 277,000 from Oregon Business Development.
Yeah, no, I tracked that. That sounds like a great project. So I'll move approval of document number 2022-787, accepting an Oregon Business Development grant. And should I make the other motion alongside, or?
We can do them separate. So I'll move, I'll second that. And then any other discussion? Calling for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Second motion.
I'll move approval of board signature of order number 2022-057, designating signing authority to Jeff Heinz.
And I will second that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. And then you said you had another item?
I do have an item for other items, if we're at that point.
Other items, okay.
Yeah. Bring forward request for approval of a payment of $297,562.80 to Oregon Beverage Service, as this would exceed the threshold of my signing authority, and I believe others as well. This would be part of an agreement and a change that I discussed to food and beverage, specifically alcohol management, with Howard Butch Graham's retirement. This year, we changed the way we were providing alcohol management services and have utilized the services of a company named Oregon Beverage Service, who were utilized and managed that program for us. And we were not anticipating the success that we saw during this year's fair, during that transition, and initially anticipated that the approval of standard agreement contract SA 22-20 from Fair and Expo that was reviewed and then went through and ultimately signed by Nick in other regards, let's see, well, in this agreement, would cover the full amount in that it would not exceed his signature authority, which was incorrect. Due to the success, the amount is far exceeds the initially anticipated amount.
Is this royalties from the total funds? Is that why?
It is, yeah. So the payment is based on the success of their management of the program. So they're paid a percentage of, or are able to bill us a percentage of the bills, of the fees, the percentage of the fees, a percentage of the revenues earned.
This is a good exceedance.
Yes, yeah. So they only generate revenue when we earn money.
But it was different, you know, canned beverages and, you know, ice. It was kind of a high volume to be able to get it, you know, served out like that instead of filling the plastic cup. So, yeah, it seemed to work pretty well. I don't know how all the, because there was different vendors, too, probably. I'm thinking Deschutes Brewery at the Food Court was different than inside the rodeo or different places.
Yeah, and, yeah, the entire liquor or alcohol management program was managed by a single group, but.
It might look different in different places.
All of the different locations, yeah, were managed by that single party, but were unique in their sales point.
So could you give us the specifics out of motion then?
Would regress payment of existing invoice in the amount of $297,562.80 to Oregon Beverage Services for management, well, for fees for alcohol sales during the 2022 Deschutes County Fair and Rodeo.
So moved.
And I'll second it. Anything else? Any other discussions? So seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. Thank you very much. Now that's on the record in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah, we are at other items. We'll be able to complete our meeting today minus item number nine, which was just rescheduled kind of on the fly, correct? Okay. So Commissioner Chang, anything, other items?
So we are not doing item number nine.
No, I coordinated with Community Development Department, and they'll bring it back next week.
Yeah, just because of timing, so we're all here.
First open house they want to talk about is two weeks away, so there's still plenty of time for them to provide the update.
I had a thing or two, but I'll need a moment to collect my thoughts. So you should go ahead if you have other items.
Okay, so October 13th, there's invitation for Sun River Chamber of Commerce, and I just was informed that Commissioner Dare will be there and I'll be there. And I think Commissioner Chang, you might have been invited.
I have a conflicting.
Yeah, not a problem. So two of us will be at the same lunch. We won't be deliberating, and they'll have minutes if we talk about anything. But I do, they did offer that basically that'll be a kind of a debrief of dollars that we were able to provide the Sun River Chamber of Commerce. Also, we may be able to bring some notes back about what good work they're doing there. And it's already been added to our schedule.
So will we publicly notice that?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's, and it has been added. So I was just acknowledging it here. So our health benefits plan topic is coming. So item number four on a spreadsheet that was provided to us is covering discretionary abortions, which we had talked about last year. It's a hot political issue. I'm just acknowledging, just for Commissioner Chang, and I wanted to let Commissioner Dare know, I'll be in the same position I was last year. Nothing will change, and we'll talk about it when it comes around. And, you know, I support that the Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, the Eback Group, they didn't need to pull this out and have a, you know, I mean, it's just a hot topic right now. So I don't mind. This is us. They were elected officials, we're the front end of this, and we'll do that. So I'm just acknowledging that, you know, that I will be moving to, you know, pull that one item when it comes around in a couple of weeks. And.
I mean, I don't see anyone pulling this out. I mean, it's, we're doing our annual review of health benefits we're providing to employees, and it was just one item on a matrix. It's not, I don't perceive anybody is pulling this out to, you know, to deal with this single issue right now.
Well, it'll be headline news again during a political season. And that's why I'm talking about it today, because we're going to talk about it in a few weeks. And it's going to be headline news, and I'm taking a position. So I'm sharing with you that I'll be taking the same position. And so I'm just kind of, I've kind of diffused it a little bit before we get started, or watch it escalate, whatever's going to happen. For ARPA dollars, this is another statement, and it's Commissioner Dare, maybe Nick, you can share these thoughts. But when we, for the last ARPA dollars we have, I really want to focus on infrastructure investments, infrastructure of projects, you know, either the county itself or like Terrebonne just today. I mean, think about how valuable writing those checks could be for offsetting those fees. Opposed to projects that are starting, you know, I guess, I'm just trying to get some clarity about direction about future ARPA expense approvals that we would do. So I'm just sharing my thoughts here today. And then also Public Safety Coordinating Council meeting yesterday. So you had mentioned it earlier, Commissioner Chang, that'd be a good place to discuss the MCAT and Stabilization Center update. But yesterday was Veterans Intervention Services, which is the effort started by the DA's office and the partnership with the court. So remember, we didn't start a Veterans Court, which was being asked for, but the DA's office started a project, and now the court is supporting it. So a little esoteric, but there's support during, for the Veterans Court systems, and that was talked about yesterday. And update on safe parking was discussed at that meeting. Those are the updates I have today.
All right. I'll mention a couple of things. Last week, I attended the Central Oregon Bike Pedestrian Summit that our county BPAC is pretty central in organizing. One of the major upshots from that, from that event was that there is a lot of interest, as I mentioned today, there's a lot of interest in separated paved paths in county road right of ways. People are envisioning these, you know, pretty, pretty grand, you know, grand vision connections between places like Sisters and Blackbeau Ranch, or between Sisters and Redmond, or Redmond all the way out to Palbeau. And there'll be a significant amount of interest in including those in the transportation system plan. So just a kind of a heads-up that there's community advocates who are going to be pulling for inclusion of certain things in these TSPs. And, you know, for some of these projects, you know, I just kind of, you know, I said, you know, there's some pretty long distances between, you know, between Bend and Redmond, for example. And there was significant advocacy for just doing chunks, you know. So actually, you know, a great example is the piece that's going to be built along Highway 20 between Bend and Terrebonne. You know, it'll get us from Bend out to the old Ben/Redmond Highway. But you build that piece, and it allows a substantial number of people who live out Old Ben/Redmond Highway to use, you know, an alternative, you know, separated paved path to get into Bend and various services. And then you can build from there to Tamalow, and then you can build, you know, another chunk from Tamalow out. And so, I mean, the way that people were envisioning some of these pathways, it would be, you know, kind of segment by segment construction rather than, you know, you need to amass enough money to have a paved bike path between Bend and Redmond, which I thought was interesting. So the Bike Ped Summit on Monday evening, I attended the Safe Parking Open House that Mountain View Fellowship offered in the city Redmond. And we heard from a lot of, we heard from a lot of neighbors in the South and Evergreen area. They expressed, you know, kind of the kinds of concerns that everyone would express about, you know, what is this, you know, what is this going to do to our neighborhood? Does this make us safer? There are a lot of homeless people, you know, in our neighborhood now, and we're concerned that, you know, setting up this established managed facility will, or shelter, outdoor shelter area is going to bring more people. I thought Mountain View Fellowship did a great job of addressing all of the concerns. Many of the people, many of the people left the meeting saying, you know, this is a great idea. We need this. We're still not very excited about having it in our neighborhood. And I don't, I don't have a really good answer for those folks, except that we should be having safe parking sites in many, many neighborhoods. And then this perception that, you know, like, oh, you're doing this to our neighborhood, but you wouldn't do that in, you know, to your neighborhood, or, you know, some other more, you know, more affluent or politically connected neighborhood. And if we just did it everywhere, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have to kind of push back against that perception. So safe parking, we had a meeting of the Public Health Advisory Board yesterday. One of the things that I encouraged the Fab to do was to track a little more closely the development of the county budget this year. Because what the Public Health Division does isn't everything that the Fab is concerned about, but it's a lot of, a lot of things that the Fab is concerned about. And if they, if they really want to ensure that there are initiatives and programs to achieve the goals that they have for the community, I just said, you got to track the dollars, because, you know, people can talk about all sorts of stuff, but where we allocate resources and what we dedicate staff to, that is, that's where we know, that's what we know what we really prioritize and what we're really getting done. So they'll be, they'll be tracking the budget process a little bit more closely this year. Tomorrow, Thursday, I'll be speaking at two events. One panel at the League of Oregon Cities Conference about collaboration among cities, counties, and special districts on water, water resources issues. And then in the afternoon, I'll speak at the Deschutes 350 Go Clean Energy Conference about the CPACE program that we, you know, that we established. And basically, at that, at that event, I'll be recapping for people some of the, some of the thought process that the county went through to decide that they were, we were going to do a CPACE program or enable a CPACE program. That's what I got.
So on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee thoughts, so we have, that path is going in in Lapine. They've scratched it out. They've got gravel down. The big equipment's running back and forth, finishing it up right now. So that's one of those connections. So it's pretty exciting seeing that come in.
Northern-South Lapine connection.
And then electric bicycles are coming on fast. I was at the Fall Festival, and they had the vendor out there. And, you know, they're evolving quickly, too. You know, it was electric assist on a standard bike. Now it's full-on frames built with battery packs built in and suspensions and off-road tires. And, oh, man, is that changing fast. Yeah. Well, and you see, like, the kids are driving them, so they're zigzagging across town. And, you know, and it's a quick acceleration. And you don't expect that when you see a bicycle. So as a, you know, pedestrian or as a automobile driver, it is a different world just seeing it happen. Because there's just like zip, zip in front of you, or jumping over the curb and crossing the street. Very different style of driving a bicycle than we've ever seen. And for the world to understand, it could be dangerous.
At the Bike Ped Summit, there was a lot of, there was a session specifically on e-bikes. And then there was a lot of interest concern around essentially driver training, rider training.
Oh, yeah. Well, and just interactions is, you know, just, because I've seen it. I was over by the old mill, and it's a uphill over to the roundabout. And there was this electric bike just, just coming right up, because we were slowing down to get into the roundabout, and he was just zooming through. I was like, that looks dangerous to me, you know. Please, everybody's got to respect.
You need a license to, you need a license to ride a motorcycle. And I mean, with, you know, that the acceleration.
That's the difference.
And the speeds that some of these e-bikes that aren't pedal assist.
Either way, but there you go, yeah.
You're getting really close to a motor.
Yep. Great. Anything else for this board meeting? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.